Ready? Okay. Good morning and welcome to Tuesday, October 25th, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. At this time, I'm going to have the clerk read out the closed session agenda items.
Closed session items for today, October 25th. Item one pursuant to Government Code 54957B1, Public Employee Performance Evaluation. Title: County Administrative Officer. Item two pursuant to Government Code 54957.6 Conference with County Designated Labor Negotiators, Judy Hawkins and Shay Johnson regarding the following employee organizations: Calaveras Management Union, Calaveras Supervisors Union, Supervisor Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local 1021. Item three pursuant to Government Code 54957.6 Conference with County Designated Labor Negotiators, Judy Hawkins and Nick Marvin regarding the following employee organizations: Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local 2015. Item four pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2 Conference with Legal Counsel Re: Existing Litigation, Robert Corkin versus County Workers Compensation Appeals Board Case Number ADJ11897479.
Thank you. At this time, are there any public comments for the closed session, 1 through 4? And I will start with June.
There are no online public comments.
Okay. With that, we'll move to the room. Are there any public comments for closed session items 1 through 4?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Vicki Escalante. I'm with SEIU 2015. I would like to hope that you would consider our negotiations and be very generous because our workers are very essential to the community. They live in your community, they work here, they spend money here, and it would be very, very good because of the fact that groceries and everything is rising. Price of gas keeps fluctuating, so I don't know what it is from week to week. But we're just hoping that you will be generous with the negotiations for our bargaining. With that, I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment? She and none. I will have the clerk report out for 10:18 closed session.
Report out from the October 18th, 2022 meeting. Item one pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D2 Conference with Legal Counsel Re: Anticipated Litigation, One Case Significant Exposure to Litigation. Board action, no reportable action taken.
Thank you. At this time, we'll convene in a closed session. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors for October 25th, 2022. At this time, could you please stand for the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Earlier this morning, we went into closed session. We will be convening back in the closed session after the regular agenda. At this time, we have staff announcement. Are there any staff announcements? If not seeing any in the room, I'm going to go to June. Are there any on June?
There are no announcements on Zoom.
Okay. We will move on to general public comment. This is for any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it's determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If the public comment is not completed within the allotted time period, it will continue as the last item of business in order to provide opportunity for the remainder of the comment to be heard. So again, this is for items not on the agenda or were on the agenda from closed session earlier this morning. Are there any public comments for any items not on the agenda? Okay. And then please be mindful of the time on the podium.
Good morning, Board. Last week, I came in all torqued up, and I wasn't mad at you, I was mad at my union. So today, I'm going to talk about something else. I'm going to talk about the sacrifice that IHSS workers make. It's a workforce that keeps the blind, the disabled, the diseased, and the dying out of rest homes, where you don't want anyone to go, ever, nor yourselves. You may think approximately 70% of home care workers care for family members in the home. And some people might think, oh, what a cush job. You know, you get to stay home and watch TV and eat bonbons and, you know. I'm going to tell you, it's a sacrifice. People that care for their loved ones often give up a career. They give up relationships. They give up their own health. I personally know, I personally knew four people who have died being home care workers here in Calaveras County. One died of cancer caring for her child. One had a heart attack, gone immediately. One had a stroke and within two months was gone. One committed suicide. They all don't die. I know this really brave woman who was a businesswoman in spite of the fact that she had lost an arm as a child. When she heard her mother was sick, she gave it all up and went home to care for mom and worked for several years ignoring her own needs. One day, she laid, oh, I used to watch her, one arm and two feet preparing test strips and injections. One day, she laid down on the couch because she was tired. She woke up in the hospital. Couple weeks later, found out she'd been in a coma. While she was there, they had to amputate one of her legs, and her mother died. During that time, her whole life, she may be a provider now, I mean, a consumer now. I lost track of her.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment? Come on up, Jane.
Good morning. My name is Anne De Ash, and I'm reading a statement from Alex Sage Walker of Calaveras Animal Rescue Squad. And before doing that, I want to acknowledge that you've heard many of these points before. They bear repeating. They are central concerns of numerous groups in the county, and you need to hear from all of us as we are all watching and waiting for progress on a new shelter. Over the last weeks, I've appreciated the supervisors and the county administrators who have met with us individually, heard our concerns, and provided information. So here's Alex's statement. Our group was formed in November of 2021. We formed to address the terrible conditions of dogs at the Calaveras County Animal Services. Our goal is to promote the building of a new shelter. We will help raise funds for a new shelter after the contract for a building of the shelter is signed, and there is a designated fund to direct donations. Our concerns: Bigger dog kennels with outside runs. This is our biggest concern because the kennels are cramped, small cages unfit to house dogs. Soundproofing. Lack of soundproofing is damaging to the hearing and well-being of animals and staff. Drainage. The present system is below standards, draining diseased excrement through all the kennels, endangering healthy animals. Fighting. Dogs fight and injure each other through the exposed space at the bottom of the kennels. Recently, a dog's tail was bitten off. Separate housing is needed for diseased dogs, pregnant dogs, and puppies. So thank you for continuing to consider all of these problems and working towards a new shelter.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Lori Morris. I'm the founder and director of Motherload Feral Cat Alliance. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit dedicated to improving the lives of community cats living in and around Calaveras County. We use the TNR method of managing community cat populations. Trap, neuter, and return is the only proven way to control feral and stray cats and improve the lives and the lives of their caregivers. In 2016, I started volunteering for Calaveras Humane Society before they opened their shelter in Angels Camp. I was lucky enough to be part of the opening of their new shelter and worked as a customer service representative and adoption counselor for three years. Like everyone, the pandemic hit CHS hard. In March of this year, they had to end their very successful feral feline program, which saw just over 4,800 cats TNR'd since its inception in 2014, 4,800. Most were then returned to the only home they'd ever known and looked after by caregivers on or around the property where they lived. Many of the resulting tamed kittens were placed with the Humane Society or Animal Services for adoption. This program was overseen by a group of amazing volunteers who were completely dedicated to improving the lives of these community cats. When the program ended, the volunteers started a GoFundMe page and managed to raise enough money to pay for the surgeries of approximately 120 cats and kittens. In May, I left the Humane Society and along with like-minded friends and the FFP volunteers, we started our nonprofit dedicated to the community cats of Calaveras as well as other communities in the Motherload. This, we are continuing to take cats of Calaveras as, oh, I'm sorry. We are continuing to take calls and help many residents with their feral cats and kittens. This in turn prevents thousands of unwanted kittens from being born. We could easily double or even triple the number of spay neuter surgeries if we were able to secure vet appointments. One local vet who gives us a substantial price break is now booking appointments in January and February. Motherload Feral Cat Alliance is proud to have joined forces with the many other animal groups and shelters of Calaveras. We strongly support the goal of a new Calaveras County Animal Shelter and Spay Neuter Clinic. It's been a dream of so many for so long. We are all very excited to see that dream become a reality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Danielle Maxwell. I'm from Avery, California, and I'm here today representing SEIU. You guys received our proposal for raises for wages.
Oh, you talking about the closed session item?
Yes, but I'd like to make a public comment in regard.
Yeah, there was public comment earlier this morning for the closed session items.
Well, a couple people, should, do I, am I able to make a public comment?
Public comment during this time is only for items not on the agenda.
Okay.
And public comment was given that opportunity during closed session this morning when we opened the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any public comment for items not on the agenda?
Good morning. Terry McBride, New California State Committee Chair and Senator, multi-generational Calaveras person, and, here we go. Thank you so much, dear. All right. So as you know, I come in front of you a whole lot, and we're getting down to the brass tacks and the final goal. I want to remind everyone why our great concerns are, and that is that California State violates oftentimes with the help of local individuals, United States Constitution Article 4, Section 4, United States Constitution Article 6, the First Amendment, that was very evident during the plandemic, and then the Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution. We the people of the state of New California, notice to all Californians, seventh Declaration of Truth. Emergency ordinance. The evidence is now clear that patterns and acts of disloyalty are on full display daily against we the people of California and we the people of the United States. Not only on a federal level, but on the state and local level as well from city council, county board of supervisors, school boards, which have been hotbeds of open seditious disloyalty against all their constituents and the Constitution of the United States. Today, we the people respond. An emergency ordinance for the reorganization of the state of California government. We the people of the state of California, by their delegates, assemble, ordain as follows: A governor, lieutenant governor, attorney general, and secretary of state for the state of California shall be appointed by this body to discharge the duties and exercise the powers which pertain to their respective offices by the existing laws of the state under the Constitution of 1849/50, as approved by the United States Congress at the time of statehood, and to continue in office for six months or until their successors be elected and qualified. The General Assembly is required to provide by law for an election of governor and lieutenant governor by the people as soon as, in their judgment, such election can be properly held. A council to consist of five members shall be appointed by the delegates assembled to consult with and advise the governor, respecting such matters pertaining to his official duties as he shall submit for reconsideration and to aid in the execution of his official orders. Their term of office shall expire at the same time as of the governor. I don't have time to read this. We never do, unfortunately, with three minutes, but I do appreciate that you do give us three minutes. Do look it over, be aware, know what's going on, know that this is the we the people, this is what our four founders did. And we usually back what they're doing. We stand by our Constitution. How many times did I come in front of you guys and say you are crushing constitutional rights of your constituents? We say the same to the state of California, sadly, we're seeing it on a federal level. Breaks my heart. I love this country. I mean, do any of you really want what's going on now to continue when you have children? Some of you have children, I know, and grandchildren. We want better, don't we? We want better for them than what we even have. Have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Are there any other public comment not on the agenda? Yes. Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you for hearing me. My name is Manuel Lars, and I am the union rep for SEIU 2015. I won't be speaking on what was covered in closed session. I represent Calaveras, Amador, and San Joaquin Counties, about 7,000 workers. And I was reassigned and also got married, so I haven't been able to attend some of our actions and discussions, but I'm back. And I just wanted to echo a little of the frustration that my friend Bonnie has communicated several times. I really appreciate her tenacity in keeping this board, you know, up to date of the needs of long-term care workers. And what I could tell you about her frustration is that we know one thing. Long-term healing is in the home. We know this because the life expectancy of someone who goes into a nursing home is two and a half years. The life expectancy of an individual who receives long-term care is 15. And it's frustrating when both your union and the county fail to recognize that. And there's reasons, which we'll probably get into when we can speak directly to issues in closed session. But I just wanted to kind of like communicate that, to give some context of what long-term care means. I personally think it's a sacred act where, and a testament to the strength of our society here in California on how we treat our elderly, our sick, our disabled. And I just want to echo and support the frustration. It's time to do something about the issue. Thank you very much. I look forward to having many more interactions with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments in the room? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Guy Myers from a P.O. box somewhere down the hill. Anyway, I'm here to talk about, I guess, what would be the opposite of defund the police. Okay? Society is getting a lot more violent. In the past, it didn't seem like shooting at police officers was an acceptable situation. Now, throughout the country, we have that happening. It seems like historically, the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors has not put enough emphasis in terms of dollars to spend on protecting the property and the citizens and families of Calaveras County. Not even following it. I don't have a scanner. I'm not looking at the thing. But the few things that I have heard about of recent situation, person, were a gentleman that lived at the home that somebody else acquired, kept coming back there. He was arrested. He was let back out. He still kept coming back there. It ended in his death at the hands of the homeowner. I don't think any homeowner should have to be put in that situation. Recently, we had an individual that wasn't too happy with whatever was going on in his life, and this thought that target practice at 2:00 a.m. in the morning would be a good idea, and that the first sheriff's deputy car that arrived would be an excellent target. Okay? Unfortunately, that gentleman is no longer with us anymore, and unfortunately, some of our officers have to live with the fact that they had to send him to meet his almighty maker. And hopefully, we don't want to put our law enforcement in a situation that monthly they're having to make that decision of sending somebody to their maker. I see some shortcomings. Number one is we're not adequately paying our law enforcement on a competitive basis with other departments. Period. Case closed. Okay? The other problem we have is they're not using as good of equipment that they should be. You know, patrol vehicles that are getting 150, 200,000 miles an hour, you know, they're kind of up against it trying to pursue a newer automobile at 90 or 100 miles an hour. So more money needs to be put in that situation. There are still some blank spots in the county as far as radio communication. Anyway, I wrote up some of my thoughts. I've never been in law enforcement, don't know what all the answers are, except we need to spend more money that's coming in from the taxpayers to protect the taxpayer's property and to protect their lives. Okay? And we can't adequately do that. Sending out, I don't know how many officers you have tonight? Okay, I'll just leave this with you. These are my thoughts. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Danielle. Good morning. Let me try this again. I apologize, I didn't realize I was on a closed agenda. I just want to give you my personal experience and let you guys know. I am from Avery. My son is 21 years old. I am a provider for my son. He was born disabled. I'm a very proud provider. My son is part of this community and has been for quite some time. Right now, in the last two years, on the 28th of this month, he's had four brain surgeries. We figured out what was going on with him. The back of his cerebellum was being herniated, and it's called Chiari malformation. It's a weird word, but it's spelled C-H-A-I-R-I. Anyhow, this recent diagnosis, I had to leave state to get him diagnosed because we were in between Peds and adults. And we came back, people are diagnosed at 5 millimeters, he's 22. He's a miracle walking around. He's had three shunt revisions, and I don't want to say I've been reduced just in home support services because I sold my house, but I am living off my savings. I've gone through three quarters of it, through travels to Stanford and hotels. The IHS wages aren't helping me sustain in this community with rents going up and travels and whatnot. So for me, it would be a great honor if this board would hear the proposal and take a good look at it. And I'm not saying that we're deserving, but just to be able to keep up with the local economy would be much appreciated. And when I get back up on my feet, because I recently had an ill loss of me put in, so I myself now are a little bit, I don't want to say disabled, but enabled to do a lot of things I used to do and care for my child. So this program is my lifeline right now, and I'm looking forward to working with you guys in the future, and I hope you guys have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment in the room before I switch to the room? Okay, I'm not seeing anything, so clerk, are there any public comments on June?
There are no online public comments.
Okay. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of the item from consent for later discussion. At this time, I will turn it to the board. Are there any board members that wishes to pull an item off of consent? She and none. Is there any staff? She and none. Are there any public comments on consent agenda? Eight? Eight? Are there any other public comment on June?
There are no public comments online.
Okay. So with that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda item for all items other than number eight, which has been pulled?
So move.
Wait, there is second.
Second, Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? She and none. Okay. Good morning, Al.
Good morning. I'm Al Segalit, Taxpayer Association. And my question is really simple. Item eight is authorize the board chair to execute the Sixth Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Calaveras County and TSS Renewables Incorporated. The amount is $3,430,000, and this is for tree removal. Do we have an idea how many trees are involved? It seems like an awful lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Mr. Osborne? Yes. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. To date, we've cut nearly 12,000 trees down in this program.
Thank you. Did you hear that, Al?
How many more trees do you go?
I guess it depends how thin the snow is, the snowmelt.
We do at least a yearly update on the tree program, and they get very detailed on what projects are coming forward and what projects we've done as we move forward. And they have to itemize every tree because that's how they get paid back this money through the program. Thank you, Al.
Mr. Osborne, would this update, will this be coming back to the board after the new year?
We're hoping to provide the fourth quarter update prior to the new year.
Perfect. Great. There's everybody's answer. Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Okay, are there any other public comments on eight? Oh, Jack?
No.
No? Okay. Ben, are you good? Okay, you're late, John, that's why I want to make sure. Okay, are there any public comments on June?
There are no online public comments.
Okay. So there is a motion to approve consent agenda item number eight.
So move, Chair. So moved, Madam Chair.
A very second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not seeing any. Okay. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the regular agenda. First, we have item number 11. Clerk, could you please read out this item? And then I believe we may need to take a moment for Ms. Davis to set up.
I, do you have a presentation? No, she does not.
Okay, okay.
So, item 11, informational item. Assessor, receive a presentation from County Assessor Leslie Davis regarding a proposed county assessor's joint powers authority.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Members of the Board. Pleasure to be here today, and want to thank your C.A.O., Mr. Pedro, for suggesting that we actually have this conversation before the agreement is presented to you. It's actually kind of refreshing to have that open discussion. As some of you know, California county assessors have been working with this state over the past 30 years to attempt to get funding from the state for our activities. I think all of you know, because we've talked about it, the schools get two-thirds of every property tax dollar that's collected. And because of the funding of schools, the states have, the state has a real interest in the activities of county assessors offices. So, our push has been to get the state to help with funding some of those services. We've had four or five different programs that have either distributed money to counties or have required counties to compete against one another for funding. The last one, you might remember, we qualified in that competition. The funding at that time was the county contributed $1 for every $2 of the state's funds. Last year, we were unsuccessful in getting funding for, from the state. The legislature passed the budget bill, but the governor vetoed that particular issue. So, this year, our approach was to go after IT services. Those would be shared services by all county assessors across the state. In order, and actually, let me back up, the state bought into that. So, the legislature, as part of their budget trailer bill, Senate Bill 189, adopted a program to create the information technology services funding, $10 million a year over the course of the next three years. As part of the requirement built into the Revenue and Taxation Code, it requires that we have a joint powers authority to receive those funds and operate those projects. Those projects include the very important issues that we've been dealing with as a result of Prop 19 of 2020. If you can think back to November of 2020, what was on the ballot was a proposal that changed the way parent-child and grandparent-grandchild exclusions operated. It changed the way that those who are over 55 or permanently or severely disabled could transfer basure values to other properties, remove the restriction from those transfers being just within a county to transferring anywhere within the state, and it changed the way that we transfer basure values in the event of a calamity like a wildfire or an earthquake or a flood. And as we have all attempted to gear up for those many changes, we've discovered that we're all facing some of the same issues. And what, one of the projects that we proposed to the state, and I attached, as Exhibit A to your packet, was the description of our proposal to the state, is what we call a Proposition 19 portal that would allow taxpayers an easy way to log in, file for those transfers of basure values, would provide easy communication between all counties across the state while maintaining confidentiality, because we do require information that is confidential as property owners are filing for these various exclusions. We also proposed a new program to e-file exemption forms. Now, we require those forms to be filed with original wet signatures, but worse, in my office and in all 58 counties in the state, we send out those exemption forms individually every year. So, we pay for printing, postage, and sending those out. So, one of the projects that we want to work on is the exemption e-filing. There are other programs or projects proposed as well, but in negotiations with the Department of Finance, we've agreed that we will focus on these first two projects in the first year, and we will not proceed on other projects until they are well along the path. In the Revenue and Taxation Code, the section that Senate Bill 189 created, it requires a joint powers authority for the $10 million in funding to be deposited for these purposes. And we have been working rather diligently to get the joint powers authority created, ran into a few little hiccups. I won't bore you with the details. I will thank Julie Moss Lewis for calling me and saying, "What are you people doing? Call Best, Best &amp; Krieger and just get this done." And so, that afternoon, we had a meeting, and I said, "Let's get outside counsel." We had county council from two or three of the counties participating with some assessors who were trying to draw up the documents. California Assessors Association funded the effort of Joshua Nelson at Best, Best &amp; Krieger to develop a JPA agreement that meets the requirements of the Government Code for Joint Powers Authority, as well as the requirements of the Revenue and Taxation Code for us to receive this funding. I'm going to be bringing that to you on November 8th. And the reason I'm going to be bringing it to you on November 8th is Department of Finance is insisting that if they are going to release the $10 million, the JPA has to be in place by November 15th. And so, I wanted to take this time to let you know what was going on, why it's happening with such a tight timeline, so that if you have any questions, you could certainly ask. We do now have the final agreement that's pretty much been vetted by county councils across the state and assessors across the state. So, it will be on your agenda November 8th. Madam Chair, if there are questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions? Ben?
Boy, all the counties? 58?
That's our hope.
All right.
We have a county or two who are balking because they were hoping that instead of doing projects that would benefit all counties, they would get a slice of the pie that they could spend as they wanted. But that's not the proposal that we made to the state, and what the state agreed to were projects that were going to benefit all or most of the counties in the state.
So, and just overall, from what I read and what you said, I'm gathering that this is, the first initial phases are IT and the exchange of data to help facilitate multi-county Prop 19-type transfers of basure value. Because I got a, recently got a call from one of my constituents, and they related that they were on a, the staff that they talked to had put, said, "There's a two-year wait on that transfer." Of maybe backlog is what they said. And they were worried about that because in this instance, a basure transfer was going to actually reduce the amount that they have to pay, and it was outside their ability to pay that amount each year until the county could refund them on the difference if they qualified for the disability transfer. So, this will help facilitate that with what money you put forward towards IT in the future?
This should with future filings. It won't for past filings. And let's kind of be clear about what has happened with that backlog. That backlog is created two ways. One, you all know about our backlog. I haven't hidden from it, and I've talked to you pretty regularly about what's going on with the office operation. But in this particular case, when this law passed, it wasn't as major perhaps as Prop 13 in 1978, but it really made some big changes to the process that we were going to follow. And the State Board of Equalization has the authority to provide advice and guidance on how we should have gone about that. They have been working on promulgating rules for us to follow, and they are just now pushing those rules to the Office of Administrative Law for Review. So, even though Prop 19 passed in 2020, two years ago, we are just now getting the guidance on how it is we are supposed to be processing these claims. So, there's two things going. When your constituents call, there are my constituents too, and you refer them to our office, everyone is being told the same thing. Are they unhappy? Sure. But let's face facts, I'm unhappy as well.
Sorry, if I forward them to you directly next time?
Good luck with that.
Muriel?
I'm pretty impressed with a system that all the assessors in the state of California can use, and with the proposal of the JPA. When I got my phone call about the, I said, "No, we don't do basure," I might have even copied you. "Oh, we don't do basure transfers." Because we didn't, so.
Right. We do now.
We do now. That was pretty impressive to learn that, of that change. So, do you know how many that we would have in this county?
I do not, and I really joke with my staff when they say, "We have this many." But they're sitting on my desk, and we have this many, so. But that, of course, includes files that are varying sizes. I don't know. I would say we probably have about four dozen, but I can't give you the exact numbers. I have my staff working on specific procedures to move them through while I'm reviewing to make sure that everybody is hitting all of the marks. And thank you for saying you're impressed. I would say to you, because I didn't mention it, but I think I put it in writing, we have a history of collaborating across the state, California county assessors do. We have two shared services right now. One is to allow businesses across the state to file their business property statements. That costs us about $1,000 a year to buy into that service, which is far less than it would have cost us to print and mail all of those statements on an annual basis. We also have the Assessor's e-forms system, puts all of the Board of Equalization prescribed forms in one place for easy access. That costs our county about $850 a year. I can tell you, we spent far more than that when we were maintaining those forms on our own website. So, we have a, we have a great history of working collaboratively on projects like this. And I'm sorry, I just have to laugh. Maybe during the break, you want to move those two witches hats because they're right above the chair and right above you.
Supervisor Tuffinelli intentionally did that?
Okay.
Just wait.
I didn't hear any opposition of the kind.
I'm not opposing. I'm simply making a suggestion.
Are there any other board questions for Leslie? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to public comment. Are there any public comments in the room?
Thank you, Leslie. Just two comments. I'm Al Segala. I'm on the Assessors Appeals Board, and I'd be interested to know what is the effect to the taxpayer, or potential effect, and what effect would on the Assessors Appeals Board?
Thank you.
Let's start with the second question because it's really easy to answer. There will be no impact on the Assessment Appeals Board. None of these projects anticipate anything having to do with assessment appeals. The effect for taxpayers, however, who might want to file for a Prop 19 exclusion or an exemption, once we have these programs up and running, is to make things far more efficient, far easier to use. We're looking for user-friendly interfaces that will allow taxpayers to log in, file their forms, and send them to us electronically. We're working on a way where we can create those electronic signature so that we don't have to have all the paperwork in our office and thus move to a less paper option.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other public comment? Okay, not seeing any in the room. Are there any on Zoom?
There are no online public comments.
Okay. So, with that, this is an informational item only. Are there any other questions by the board before I allow Ms. Davis to have a good day and do what she wants, not stand in front of us?
Thank you. See you during the next meeting.
I will see you on November 8th with the JPA and ask for your approval and authorization to execute. Thanks so much, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Thank you. All right, next, we have regular agenda item number 12. I will turn it over to the clerk to read out.
Item 12, informational item, human resources. Receive an update on implementation of the county's telecommuting policy.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management Director. We had passed the permanent telework policy on April 12 of this year, and it was asked to bring back in six months an item discussing how the program is going. There was a concern to make sure that we were keeping up the level of services with the departments, with employees working remotely. We have a, we had a process in place after this was approved, and employees filled out the applications, supervisors reviewed them, department heads approved them, and then our safety specialist, Emma Bell, would reach out and make sure that the space that they were using does meet ergonomic requirements. And so, a lot of the applications weren't actually in place until June, so we don't have a full six months of data. But the feedback that we're currently getting is a lot of the departments that, and I think the success is in our larger departments that have the coverage that's necessary. We do have some small departments that have more technology in place, where employees are working remotely, can get to all of the information they need, or they're not public-facing. And so, there's not members of the public coming in, and a lot of the workflow is being done efficiently. They're not being interrupted as much, and they're able to get more work done in the time, and they're also, they're not traveling back and forth, those type of things. So, some of the information that we have received when we were talking with employees, and some employees have had challenges, and I think a lot of these challenges were in the beginning where a supervisor is telecommuting, a, somebody, another supervisor's called in sick, so there may have been a shortage of staff in the office. We have been working with the department heads to make sure that we are staffing appropriately, and then if there is a shortage, the department heads may have to step in and fill the void. I have not had any body report back to me, any department heads of complaints that they received from the public. It's just mostly been department to department, where one department may reach out to have questions on a contract, or they have something that has a strict timeline attached to it, and they have difficulty getting a hold of the person that they need to talk to. We have been putting in additional technology in the departments where employees have Jabber, which is a communication tool on the computer where they can instantly talk to one another. Jabber? Yes. And so, between Jabber teams, there's a lot of different technology that we are getting staff used to so that we can get information back quickly, and then we know how responsive. And then also, their staff or management's able to track the performance of the employees, and that things are getting done timely. Like I said, it's not that we haven't had any hiccups. We have had, you know, some where expectations had to be cleared up and making sure that everybody everybody understands the expectations, and so that the work doesn't fall on somebody else, because you're not able to get it done remotely. I do, I have invited department heads to also speak to this, and how the program is working in their department. So I have Cory.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Cory Allen, Health and Human Services. I think it's important that, as a department head, I share with you, I have over 200 employees, and our ability to work in serving your, your constituents has been enhanced by the telework and the telecommute plan. It requires that our managers, our leaders, our deputy directors and supervisors engage in clarity of expectations. I did meet with all of my management team to evaluate with them how they feel this program is working, and it was an overwhelming positive. I appreciate their candor and also outlining where there's areas where they, as leaders, can improve, being really conscientious around coverage. Each division is unique, behavioral health meets with clients in person, public health has a lot of work they do out in the community, and a lot of work that's being done to develop grants and other technical duties. So when you think about all the different types of work, there really is a place for telecommuting in a lot of different varieties. So the adaptive nature has been incredible, and the IT, your information and technology team has been tremendous. I know that, as an example, I had an individual who moved, she ended up having to work from home for medical reasons, and within an hour, she was able to be fully up and running and productive. Another example is I had an individual tell me that we recruited her because she had an option to work in a nearby county, and an option to work in Calaveras, and she chose Calaveras because we offered a telecommute option. So I just wanted to give you that feedback.
Thank you, Cory.
And I do also want to clarify, in the numbers, in the 17% of our employees, approximately 17% that are telecommuting, that does not include reasonable accommodations that we have made for staff due to medical reasons, because that is on a temporary basis. So these are true telecommute agreements.
Hi, Stan.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Stan Moore here, representing IT. So just to tell you a little bit about the program within the IT area. We have 17 and a half FTEs in IT, 10 of whom are participating to some degree, and it's about 30% of the hours in a week that are, that are performed telework. Most of the people who are teleworking are either one, two, or, or three days a week. We did, we did a fair amount of, of review of the program initially, made sure that we are staggering the days that are telecommuting, so that we have adequate resources in the shop. There are some positions within IT that are not open to telework, based on the, based on the requirements of that position. So we do look person by person, position by position. And then, as, as Judy was talking, we have different communication capabilities in place, so that if someone is working from home, our, our user, our, our community is, is the other departments, because we are an internal service department. We do not work directly with the public. We support people who are supporting the public. So it's very important for us to be successful, that if one of our users is trying to reach someone who is telecommuting, that we don't burden the users with having to track them down. They should be able to call their desk phone and, and get to them, they should be able to, to work with any of a number of collaborative tools, so that, so that we're not burdening our users. We also have times where we require people who are teleworking to be into the, come into the office on a day that they would normally be teleworking. Everyone understands that, that there are needs to do that. So, so the IT staff works in a very cooperative and collaborative process to make, to make sure that we are continuing with our mission of supporting the departments. So we ask our staff, what, what do you think of it? They're very pleased with it, some of the same things that Judy was going over. There are times when, when having that, that ability to work in a, in a less interrupted fashion helps people to work through their tasks in a more efficient way. There's also people that, that drive a fair distance to come into the office. Having the ability to work one or two days a week from home, not pay between five and $6 a gallon for gasoline, that, that makes a real difference to people. And as, as Cory was talking about, we believe that it, it is, it's not a competitive advantage, it's a requirement in IT to offer this as an option when, when we are competing against other areas for, for, for staff. So it has been a success in our area. We talked to our users and asked them how, how we, how well we are doing in supporting, and, and our users are typically in line with, with our view that this has been a successful program. So I wanted to come in and talk about what we're doing in IT, and thank the Board for, for allowing this program to, to continue while, while we still evaluate and find, there's more work to do, but, but I think we're, we're doing a good job of it right now. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Stan? No? Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I just figured after each individual, good morning.
Morning. Michael Hatfield, DA's office. The DA had to go to court, so she's not able to be here. I will try to give you her input as best as I can, but it's not going to be quite as eloquent as what she would do. I didn't realize that IT had that many people teleworking. Since this started, every time I've, I put in most of the help desk tickets for our office, and every time I put in a help desk ticket or call them, they're just as responsive as before. So I just wanted to say that. I haven't noticed, I was surprised to see that many, because it's been the same. We have four people teleworking, two of them are only one or two days per week, and the others, sometimes they're, it's an entire week, and then other times none, so that averages it out to just over three days a week if you were to go year-round. The only issues that we had were originally trying to find out who was teleworking, who was not, where people were. So we signed up for a, a electronic in-out board, to where the, it's a website we can go to, and everyone just kind of signs in and out, so you know where they're at at any time. And that's great, because we also can tell if someone's out sick, when they're going to be back, if they're on vacation, whatever. So that kind of solved our only issue that we had. This has allowed us to be available for some of the people that we work with. So I'd like to say we have, one of our partners is the Resource Connection, the Children's Advocacy Center. There's a multidisciplinary team meeting each month that has, it's the Resource Connection, CPS, law enforcement, and since people, a lot of the time, before these teleworking agreements started, most of the time we didn't have someone to send, because court and people get pulled out of stuff, just distractions and stuff, so we couldn't send someone to the meetings. Now that people are teleworking, the people who are teleworking actually attend the meetings remotely, because they're, they don't have the distractions and they're able to do this. So I'd like to say, this is a message from Dr. Kathy Boyle at the Children's Advocacy Center. She says that it has been very informative, insightful, and extremely helpful to have a representative from the DA's office live via Zoom for our MDT meetings each month. Cases are reviewed, and the view from the DA's office helps us to better understand the process and case outcomes. The MDT meeting team has spontaneous questions that can be answered in real time, adding great value to the process. Because of the teleworking program, we've been able to further develop our MDT, a critical step in achieving accreditation for the Children's Advocacy Center. And then finally, one other one is from the Sheriff's Office. This is something that actually, we hope this continues to go forward just for this purpose, to help them out. The Investigations Unit of the Sheriff's Office has benefited from having direct access to an attorney who is available by telephone and immediately responsive to needs and questions. Our deputies are reliant upon the availability of an attorney who can receive an electronic document and immediately review it. This contrasts with waiting for an attorney who may be unavailable due to court or other trial functions. The Sheriff's Office is hopeful that this efficient workflow and availability will be able to continue. And this is, we don't have an attorney in the office just sitting around waiting to answer a phone. If there's a deputy in the field that has a question on doing a search, or getting a warrant, or anything like that, they call our office to speak to an attorney. If everyone's in court, and, or if no one's at their desk, they kind of have to just sit there and wait, and we try to get someone to call them back. And that's for deputies that are in the field with dealing with something. So by having people teleworking, they don't, they're not in court, they're not being pulled away, distracted from their phone, they, they can actually answer the phone when the deputies call. So that has been a huge advantage. That's, that was kind of an unexpected thing that worked out. And as long as we have that teleworking in place, we can continue to do that. But if we don't have teleworking, we would, you know, it would be just try to find someone. So I just want to thank you guys for putting this forward, and HR and IT for making this happen as well with the, a lot of technology that had to go into this.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Yeah.
You had a question. Supervisor Stopper.
Supervisor Stopper had a question. I just, I just have to say, you're talking about two different things from where I'm, from my perspective, where I'm sitting. Now, I, I understand the benefits of teleworking, especially for the DA's office, in retaining some of the employees. But you're talking about, you know, remote tech, because you have your obligations to go to court on any given day, because that's what the schedule is. So, you know, it doesn't matter whether you're working from home, or you're working from your desk, or you're in court, same thing applies. You have a phone or a piece of tech on you, someone can immediately get to you, and you can respond, whether you're at home, on the road, onsite, or at court. You know, so, you know, I, I hear where you're coming from. Those, that type of technology is a benefit to the DA's office, but we're talking apples and oranges when it comes to teleworking or working from the office, because you should be able to apply that either way.
Yeah, with, so with that, before people were teleworking, they were not always available. Because it's not just going to court, it's also that anyone who's in a meeting, or anyone who's pulled out of their office because someone else had a question. When the people are teleworking, the assignments that they're doing tend to be drafting motions for court, making charging decisions, reviewing cases that are coming in. That's all work that had to be done before, but it tended to be pushed to outside of regular business hours because of court workload and because of distractions and everything. So what the, when people are teleworking, they tend to be just kind of working on their computers mostly, and so they are available for phone calls that normally you would not, they would, you wouldn't have someone available. So even though, yeah, I mean, you, you know, we can't just assign, everyone, all of the attorneys have work cell phones, but we can't just kind of push it out to, okay, we'll forward them to so-and-so's cellphone, because you don't know where they're at, what they're doing, you know, it, it is an availability issue, and it was before teleworking. This has, it's one of those things that we did see a, it was an unexpected benefit. Yeah. Did that kind of answer the question, or no? Okay.
Thank you.
So are there questions I can answer?
Are there any other questions from the Board? I have a couple of questions. I hope this doesn't poke any. So talking about tracking, you know, I've heard percentages from each of the group that have spoken today, but are we able to track those, those hours? Do we have the capability to support that? So then that way, we're, we're, you know, you mentioned the sign out, sign in board for one department, but tracking the hours when they submit their time to really get down to how many hours employees are spending teleworking versus in the office?
So we do not have a system that's across the board for every department. Every, we have worked with every department in making sure that they have clear expectations of their staff, and where if work is not being done, or they can't get a hold of them, then there may be an issue there. Also, most departments have to track their time to either, because they have grants, A-87, just different things, and so their time has to be accounted for. And then we've had management come see me going, it doesn't make sense that this took this long. And then that's a conversation with the person who is teleworking. We have had people brought back in from teleworking, because they were not meeting the goals and expectations that were set for them. So each department has a different manner that they are tracking to ensure that the employees teleworking are productive.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other board questions? This is an informational item only. Supervisor Stopper.
There's, I see quite a few benefits, depending on which department and where. I mean, Stan's IT section is really straightforward, you know? He's already tracked the hours at 37%, you know? But when it comes to IT, this makes sense, as long as you still work in your schedule, and there's people here to address technical issues. You know, there's, and I could go through, like, the benefits for, for the district attorney and be able to retain DA's that, you know, are qualified, that may not be able to be present all the time, and they're able to function it through their scheduling. Some of these, on other hands, I'm not going to single any out, they don't make sense to me, because they're direct, public, access type of positions that facilitate things. And, you know, overall, I'm having a hard, I had a hard time with this originally, and this is why I was one of the major people that were asking to have this brought back and reported on, because I have concerns, and I still, I, I still at this time have concerns about certain areas in which people are doing what, so that we can best service Calaveras County. You know, I, I see the benefits in a lot of areas, at the same time, you know, if we can tighten the belt and make sure that we're getting out the services that we're here to retain in the most efficient manner, please, please move forward on that.
Are there any other supervisor comment? Supervisor Carroway?
I'm a big proponent of this. I do understand Supervisor Stopper's concerns, but my feeling is, is that the respective department heads know what they need to do to provide the services to the public and/or to internal clients, like I heard Mr. Hatfield talking about, or Mr. Moore talking about. I am really pleased with how well it's going, and yes, as Ms. Hawkins said, there are some hiccups, but we'll probably have hiccups five years from now with the same people that we would have hiccups with today. So I think as we move forward, as a progressive county, and as a county that, where we want people to work, and to be proud of working for, this is just another way that we can serve the employees now and into the future. So I'm pretty excited about where we are. Thank you, Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you. And?
Go ahead.
And to address Supervisor Stopper, we are launching a full-day HR training with management. We're starting off with supervisors and managers. We will also be including appointed and department heads. And one of the things that we are training on is making sure that they do understand setting clear expectations, and what happens if employees are not meeting that expectation. If you have somebody on an telework agreement, but they call in sick every Friday, and so they're working maybe one or two days in the week, how to address that, and how to they're working maybe one or two days in the week, how to address that and how to handle these type of issues. This is, you know, we do have lots of things that we are working through and we are improving the process every day. And there are departments that, you know, are not able to telework and it's unfortunate, it's tough, but there's just either not enough staffing or they are too public-facing. And so those are things we are trying to work with and communicate with the employees to make them understand. And as technology progresses, then that also creates a, the stronger ability to do their job well remotely.
Thank you, Judy. So with that, I'm going to move it to public comment. Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none in the room, are there any on June?
There are no online public comments.
Okay, great. Thank you, Judy, and thank you everyone that came in and spoke on this. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
We're going to take a brief five-minute break here to allow the next item to be set up for the presentation. Okay, thank you. Welcome back. At this time, I will allow the clerk or have the clerk read our item number 13, please.
Item 13, informational item, Health and Human Services Agency, receive a presentation from Health and Human Services Agency and the Planning Department about housing programs and services.
I'll return it over to Ms. Allen and Mr. Elliott.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Cory Allen, Health and Human Services Agency. And with me today, I have Planning Director Gabriel Elliott.
Good morning.
And we also have your Housing Program Manager, Lee Kimball, who will be available if there's any specific or detailed questions. Today is simply a study session to provide you an update on where we are collectively in providing housing opportunities in Calaveras County. As I've mentioned, you will hear from both myself and Mr. Elliott. The overview of our presentation today will include a brief synopsis of data that drives our housing decisions, information on the development of housing programs, progress, innovations, and of course, opportunities and challenges ahead. So using data, we'll be able to determine how and what our needs are. We do not just simply stab in the dark, but we do follow data that's available to us in determining the housing needs. The first thing we do is look at the average housing costs. So the median rental cost in Calaveras County, as established on the statewide housing plan dashboard, is $1,354. That's your median rental cost. And your median income in Calaveras in 2020 was set at $67,000 per year. And the median home value in that same time was $340,000. It's important now to look at the unmet housing needs that also exist within Calaveras County. So we break this out within, for instance, disabled households. Nearly half of those who identify as disabled are struggling to find housing or have housing obstacles. And within your elderly category, you're at close to 42% struggling with housing issues. Large family households are up at almost 60%. And our most glaring number is the low-income household need at over 70%. And what we also want to factor in is cost burden. So your housing and urban development and housing and community development, I'll refer to them as HUD and HCD, establish a cost burden and that is set at 30% of household income. This slide is going to demonstrate the percentage of households by size to the measure of cost burden that they experience. So let's take for an example, the first column on the left, small family. The good news is that represented in green is over 64% are not considered cost burdened. And between 20 and an additional 15% are either cost burdened or severely cost burdened. The challenge I see looking at this slide is in the middle bar, representing your elderly population, nearly 50% are not considered cost burdened, but you have over 21 who are and almost 30% who are severely cost burdened in their attempt to secure and maintain housing. How we get to that figure is to look at the average median income limits for those individuals residing in Calaveras County. This is an annual report HCD puts out, so this is 2022 data. The word affordable can be very labeled or laden, subjective, but what we're showing you here is that affordability is actually established numerically or mathematically. Let's look at a household size of four. So it's your fourth column over. 100% AMI, or average median income, demonstrated is $90,000 household income. So for a family of four, if you are bringing in $90,000, that would be 100% of your AMI. Any family with that structure or number of people who make less than $90,000 then fall into, say, 80%, 60% or smaller of your average median income. And what I'm going to move into and show you is that affordability comes down to matching that up with the actual cost of housing. So affordable rent in Calaveras County 2022, for a family of four, let's leave, this will be the final row, three-bedroom, 4.5-person household. Anything higher than $2,024 rent, I'm sorry, $2,340 rent would not be possible for a person bringing in that $90,000 income. When a person is even 20% below AMI, now their rent really needs to be closer to $1,872. And you can see those figures drop as a person's income drops as well. Someone bringing in only 50% of AMI would need to find a rental at $1,170. So as you can see, based on these actual rental prices, there'll be a potential need for support, either case management or work employability training, subsidies, because those, those lower incomes make it very difficult to establish rentals. Let's also look at affordable home sale prices. Nearly 75% of residents in Calaveras County are actually homeowners. An affordable three-bedroom house for the averaged income family of four, as you can see in the second column from the right, is, what am I looking at, $391,000. If you only make 80% of the average median income, you need to find a price point at or below $300,000. And again, those figures drop as your income drops lower, be up below average median income. You can see house prices typically sell for more than that. We also will be looking at the regional housing need allocation or the RENA. Now, the RENA is established within our housing directive, just a state directive. And what this does is tells us, how many homes do we need to have developed and available within Calaveras County? In this housing element, we can see by the year 2027, we need to establish almost 1,100 residents or homes. And we need about 25% of them to exist between extremely low and very low income within that spectrum. So as you could see that slide, you can see we have a lot of work ahead of us. Another set of data that we look at in informing the work that we're doing is a point in time or pit count of homeless. Now, I will say, this is not the most advanced study. It's one day in January in Calaveras County where it's very cold. And so the pit count can be somewhat fluctuating over time. In looking back at our five-year plan to prevent or eliminate homelessness, I noticed our pit count grew between the years 2015 and 2019. But now looking at 2019 till now, we've actually seen a dramatic drop in who we were able to count in the pit count. So homelessness, by that study, dropped by 55%. Now, the support for those in order to prevent homelessness and increase housing opportunities, those services grew from five households to over 18, increasing by 360%. So part of our, our job today is to show you some of the innovative ways that we have really leaned in to establish supports for families and individuals to prevent homelessness. One thing that's also critical is to be able to count and assess and evaluate the data that comes in. Now, this homeless management information system, we'll refer to it as HIMSS, is a tool that once was managed outside of your housing programs. With the support of Lee Kimball and her team, we were able to bring HIMSS in-house and develop and improve that, that data system to help along the continuum of care in the region, including Amador, Toowalomee, Mariposa, and Calaveras. So basically what it does is it tracks individuals as they access resources and supports. So in 2020, you can see, we served 76 individuals. 55 of those in 2020 were supported and housed with stability. Eight individuals transferred, so that could include going into an inpatient treatment facility or so forth. Six individuals continued on with our program and seven were unsuccessful as they exited. That demonstrated a housing stability success score of 72%. That improved again in 2021 to a 75% stability success rate and is doing equally well at 71% here in 2022. So what I would like to do now is transfer the conversation over to your Planning Director, Gabriel Elliott. He's going to walk us through.
Before you, before you, there are some questions.
Oh, questions.
Supervisor Carrow.
This homeless management information, I'm not quite sure I'm clear on what all that means. When you say six continue, continue, continue with what? An unsuccessful exit? Where do they, where do they go? Back to the park or under the trees or?
I'm going to refer to Lee Kimball, your housing manager, to answer that question.
This database is a state-appointed one. So we're required to keep this, not only to track our homeless individuals and what we're doing, our effectiveness, it helps us to adjust. So we have improved the system. Before we, when we contracted out for it, it didn't capture work that was being done by the county. It only captured work being done by nonprofits. And that allowed us to look at these categories. The state would only count success as prior to us reach, adjusting the database, if a person moved from street homelessness to permanently housed, meaning into a rental. And they counted as a success regardless of who was paying that rent. So if the government subsidized the rent and then withdrew and the person became homeless again, it counted as not a success. We didn't feel like that's accurate for what's going on. So what you're looking at here, they're households, not individuals. So there's, there's a lot of folks because they're families and there's couples. When they're housed stably, that means they are in the final stages of receiving any government assistance towards their housing. When it says they're transferred, these are people who are families who have burdens on them that are not able to focus on stably housing. That can mean they need behavioral health treatments, addiction treatments. So we transfer them and provide support to them while they address things that don't stabilize them and then we bring them back in when they're ready.
Are they still living on the street then? Are they back on the street?
We're going to house them depending on the program. We have about 12 programs now. So if it's a disability, we're going to provide the housing stability for them as long as they're working on those items that are destabilizing their families. When, when we talk about transfer, that's what we're talking about. When we talk about continuing, these are people who, in the course of that year, weren't able to successfully complete our program. So we have four areas that we work on real specific to housing stability that they're working on. And some folks, an example, our foster kids often have not been provided even simple helping them with budgeting and, and how to care for a house. So sometimes it takes a little longer, but they're still in the program, showing up and doing the deal. Unsuccessful exits, for the most part, have been incarcerations. And there have been times when people opt out, they are not willing to do the work and we don't have options for those folks. It's a very small number. So that's, our success has a higher standard than the state requires.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a, I have a question, Lee. So you're telling me of the 76, say, in 2020, some of those could be individuals from a family, a family of four would take up that number or would just be 76 with those included?
So we call it a household for everyone who's in the household. And sometimes a household is one person.
Yes.
Most of the time, it's two or four. It depends on, you know, if they have children, if it's a single parent. So, but it could be if there's no one else in the family but one person, it would still be a household.
So that's a total number then, the 76, including family members?
It's not individuals, it's 76 households. I did not bring the individual count.
76 households, okay, so that's not individuals, it's households.
We do have individual counts. We didn't want to overload y'all with numbers. If you do want them, shoot me an email. I'm happy to provide individuals as well as demographic makeup, how many are seniors, children, from foster youth, veterans. So we do keep demographic information in the same database.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions before they go to the next speaker? Okay, none? Go ahead, Cory.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'd like to transfer the conversation to Mr. Elliott.
Thank you very much, Cory. Good morning, members of the board. The following slides will kind of go into the housing element. Now, the housing element was a document that the board actually approved in 2019. And the housing element kind of takes a look at the county's housing situation for a period of eight years. During that period of time, there are some targets that, one of which was the regional housing needs assessment, which was the RENA numbers. But there were also some goals and objectives that were part of that 2019 housing element. And I'm going to specifically talk about seven of the goals that were implemented as part of the housing element. The first one is new housing constructions. Then we're going to talk about affordable housing. Then we're going to talk about special needs housing, equal opportunity housing, existing housing, energy conservation, and then implementation and reporting. So goal number one, which is residential construction. This table, thank you, Cory, this table actually shows that housing production between 2019 and 2021, we received a total of 656 housing applications. The highest rate we experienced was in 2021, when we had 183 for all income levels. There were no permits, as you could see here, for low-income or, or very low-income households. And that is one particular area that we seem to be struggling with when it comes to housing production. So going back to the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which was, you know, talked about by Corey earlier, these are state mandated numbers that our county is supposed to meet, 1,096 housing units, but kind of broken down into very low, low, moderate, and above moderate income. Now, when it comes to the very low and low-income household categories, there is a need to introduce special agencies that actually do low-income and moderate-income housing. We have successfully worked with maybe two out of the three. One of them is Sanos House Housing Authority. Another one is Mercy Housing. And the third one is Rural County Housing Development. And we have had moderate to low success rate with the last two. And Sanos House Housing Authority is about the only one that's actually sticking by the county as far as we go through this process. And as you could see on the board, by 2020, by 2027, we're supposed to hit a target of a total of a specific number of housing units. And right now, we have about 890 housing units shy of that number with seven years, 2022, with five years to go. So there's still hope. So goal number two of the housing element is affordable housing. And affordable housing kind of tends to be a misnomer. When we talk about affordable housing, people see all kinds of things. But quite frankly, I just want to talk about some of the successes we have achieved with affordable housing. We have applied for and received three funding opportunities for affordable housing, the REAP, which is Regional Early Action Plan, the LEAP, which is Local Early Action Plan, and then the PLHA, which is the Permanent Local Housing Allocation. We have received about $1.2 million for the PLHA over a period of five years. We are in the, what year are we with the PLHA?
Year three.
We're year three of the PLHA. So our hope is to be able to take advantage of the $1.2 million. And the focus of affordable housing is actually going to be on workforce housing because that is something that is really, really needed in our, in our county at this particular time. As part of affordable housing, I know the last time we gave you the presentation, we talked about the ADU Owners Manual. That ADU Owners Manual is almost at a stage of completion. Also, down payment assistance grants are available. Disabled home modification programs are all part of the accomplishments we've made up to date. And then a partnership with Local Housing Authority, which is, we increased the number of housing vouchers, and then technical assistance for development. Goal number three, special needs housing. The Homeless Disability Advocacy Program is a program that actually puts people in housing programs with assistance, with social security disability, with a social security disability application. So we have a program in place that actually helps people that have special needs housing. Housing Element Goal Number Four, Equal Opportunity Housing. We've provided referrals to local residents who have equal opportunity housing grievances, and they can refer them to Department of Fair Housing, Department of Inflation and Fair Housing for the State of California. And the federal is Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is the HUD. Goal Number Five, Existing Housing. One of the policies we adopted was establishing one housing resource partnership. I'm sorry. Identify programs to protect existing housing stock and then investigate impact of short-term rentals on county's housing stock. And through the Housing Resource Partnership, we're able to accomplish these goals. Housing Goal, Element Goal Number Six, Energy Conservation. Now, this is, again, we're going back to when the housing element was adopted in 2019. Some of the issues that we're talking about today with climate action plans and things of that nature were not made a part of the housing element. But specifically, when it comes to housing, energy conservation, the focus of the housing element was doing, through weatherization of homes. That was, that was the main focus of weatherization. So we're not talking about electrification and any of those other issues that we're talking about today when we're talking about greenhouse gases and so on and so forth. So weatherization specifically was a goal of energy conservation in the approved housing Housing Element Goal Number Seven. So to facilitate, or to implement Housing Element Goal Number Seven, we hired a housing program manager, Lee Kimball, who is in the audience today. And we have tried and have met all our reporting obligations up to date. So this is where I'm going to hand over back to Corey, but if you have any questions for me, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Are there any questions by the board at this time? Nope?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Elliott. So housing services is clearly a critical component of the work that we do to achieve housing opportunities. In 2019, your board approved the Five-Year Strategic Plan to End Homelessness. This plan was created collaboratively with community stakeholders through a task force and is required in order to access state and federal grants. There are five strategies within that homelessness plan, and it was made a part of your packet. The first is to coordinate homeless data collection and planning. The second is to increase housing inventory. You'll notice the trend, we're just sort of hitting on the needs for data, the needs for access, enhancing and expanding housing support services. The fourth was to strengthen community collaborations, and finally, to pursue emerging opportunities. The first towards Strategic Plan to End Homelessness was through our HIMSS database. We did, like I mentioned earlier, bring that in-house and customized it for our regional continuum of care and more specifically, our local needs. Again, through the point-in-time homeless counts, we were able to measure homelessness, and we were able to demonstrate a trend, in this case, a 55% decrease in the number of street homeless and a 360-degree increase in the numbers of households served. So that's element one. The second element, increase housing inventory. So through our coordinated, coordinated entry system being regional, we do have an ability to meet weekly with collaborators. We have the data-driven shared database. This allows us ease of access and families' ease of access to the services available. And the second, through a housing locator, we've been able to increase housing access. What that is, is engagement with a landlord and a real estate expert who serves as a navigator. We also have landlord incentives and case management, basically as a way to develop a path into stable housing. This partnership has resulted in a 70% success rate with otherwise previously chronically homeless households. This was a unique effort that Ms. Kimball came up with. The third is enhancing and expanding house, housing support services. So we brought direct service programs in-house. We rebuilt our program delivery model. We expanded the number of housing programs from two, when Ms. Kimball started, to 12 in-house services programs. With that, we increased our annual budget from $150,000 to $3.7 million. We increased service from under 20 households per year to serving over 60 in a year. We've changed our focus to that of long-term housing stability and away from emergency housing response, and created a unique one-on-one tenant education program. We also established, and I think this, there's a critical piece, we established a unique method for assessing housing stability successes. What we often see is a deficit-based model, and what we have developed locally is a strength-based model that scores households on their financial, their property maintenance, their relationships, and their managing leases history. And so that strength-based model has certainly turned us to a much more positive outcome, and you can see that just through the households being served. We assess at orientation, and we assess our households annually, monthly after, during the time that they work with us. And then strengthening community collaborations. We have maintained and furthered relationships with those partners in our communities, including the Continuum of Care, the Real Estate Locator Service, our Local Housing Authority, the development of our Housing Resource Partnership, and, under construction, an improved web and social media presence. And finally, the pursuant of emerging opportunities, you can see we're diligently looking at new funding, developing new programs, ensuring enhanced and improved partnerships, increasing our system access and methods in working with families, and improving outreach. And what that leads us to is a number of innovations. We in Calaveras County have a collaboration I've not seen in any other county, which is the collaboration between your Planning Department and your Health and Human Services Agency, allowing for a true housing system that looks not only at infrastructure and the planning and a plan, but also the services, what I like to refer to as the house and the home. We have, like I've mentioned, a strength-based program design that looks at where people are headed, not what they're coming from. And looking at a one-stop center, we've been working hard to develop our housing resource one-stop center. We've got the partnership in place. We're getting very close to a location where we can even more intentionally connect with our community. And there's always going to be additional opportunities and challenges. So let me just lead with one of the opportunities. Do you want to start here, or do you want me to?
Go ahead.
Okay. So opportunities pursued will be those that achieve the goals within your housing element and within the five-year plan to end homelessness. The Housing Resource Partnership has two committees, one focused on the development side, one focused on services. And we are working on creating a new housing strategic plan to prioritize Calaveras housing needs and matching them to the opportunities available. We've organized all of our available funding opportunities. We've provided you a listing of funding that's available within development and within services. And we map them to the general plan. We want to make sure that we are intentional and that we go after dollars that make sense in Calaveras County. There are 42 development and 35 services, state and federal funding opportunities, that we will research and match to the priority needs. And the challenge is moving forward, Mr. Elliott.
Thank you, Corey. So as Corey mentioned earlier, we put together a Housing Resources Committee where we have representatives from the county, from the building industry, and every other facet of the community that provides housing services. And basically, these are some of the results of our collaboration. The first thing, you know, that comes very clear is that there's a shortage of local developers and contractors to do housing in general. We have a lack of multifamily construction opportunities. There are very few that I've come across since I've been here since April. We have a very anemic infrastructure capacity, which means even if we have these projects and this development that come forward, there's another layer of obstacle, which is how do we serve them? How do we provide them with water and sewer and electricity and so on and so forth? And then, in certain instances, you know, we have some mandated environmental clearances that we have to go through, you know, under CEQA, however. Some type of housing that is strictly towards the poor and low-income housing may be exempt from CEQA requirements, but other types of large subdivisions that may benefit people of lower income are not exempt from CEQA. As far as affordable housing is concerned, you know, there's a huge funding gap between workforce rents and construction costs. So we can ask somebody to build affordable housing, but then, for them to make their money out of it, it has to come at a particular price level. And sometimes, that particular price level doesn't really coincide with the income opportunities that these housing units are supposed to serve. There's a lack of local affordable housing developers. We don't have very many of them that we work with. And then, there is a lack of consensus on where to locate temporary and low-income housing within the county. So these are, these are some of the challenges moving forward. As far as special housing needs, there's a rising need for alternative senior housing options. I'm not sure, you know, whether we actually have any specific housing development in the county that cater towards senior, if we, towards the senior population, if we do, maybe, maybe there's very few of them. And then, we have the CARE Court, which is something that's, which is something that's mandated. So with existing housing, short-term rentals impact housing supply for local residents. This is not a myth. And how we need to balance the needs to have short-term rentals and the benefits that we get from it with housing supply in general for members of our, for residents of our county is something that we need to collectively think about as we go forward. We have an extreme shortage of low-income affordable housing being built. Yes, there are housing units being built in Calaveras County, but they are not within that low-income affordable housing category. And then, expansion of ADUs. This morning, I was able to get some data on ADUs. We do allow ADUs in the county, that, you know, we have, we even allow ADUs in conjunction with manufactured housing. So you can have ADUs, which are regular-type construction, and also ADUs for manufactured housing. And how, we need to look more into how we can benefit and meet our housing obligations through the accessory dwelling units. Some of the other issues that are, that are, you know, in the, in the challenges category have to do with messaging and misinformation. have to do with messaging and misinformation. When the word affordable rolls out of our tongues, it basically elicits a very visceral and very negative connotation. And I don't know how we're going to get over that because it is a glaring need for our county. There are people who would benefit from that type of housing. But more specifically, we have an obligation in our adopted housing element to provide certain number of housing units. The county is not in the housing construction business. However, there are agencies out there that do nonprofit housing construction that we could partner with, or we could, we could refer developers that are willing and able to do projects but are looking for funding to be able to, to be able to liaise with these agencies. And then project preparation required for some funding sources. These are some of the other issues that, you know, that we're dealing with. Let's see. So I don't want to exit this particular portion of my presentation without inviting Lee Kimball to the podium to maybe amplify any of the other, any of the items I may have mentioned that I didn't go into specifically enough. So Lee, if you don't mind, please set up to the podium. And after Lee, then we can have a series of questions from the members of the board. Thank you.
Before we start, questions and comments. I think maybe something you'd be interested in is, we, last time we presented on, on housing, it was 2019, so we really got ambitious with trying to achieve the goals of these two documents you've adopted in 2020, which is right when the pandemic hit. And that changed a lot of what happened in housing with Project Room Key, as well as everywhere else, I'm sure, in the county. So I think the progress we've made on both sides of housing, both in planning, towards looking at what we can do to make development go, as well as in Health and Human Services, where we started our focus, has been pretty great for the first three years. And I'm really looking forward to focusing on development as we move into the next three years because we really need to build some housing. So I guess we take questions and comments now?
Are there any board questions? Do you have, I just, Callaway?
Ms. Kimball, when you met, I can't address the rest of the county, but with the contractors and efforts passed about building and the services and the funding that you could help, why didn't they take us upon that? What were their reasons?
So the three nonprofit developers that I have spoken with, so I primarily focused there because where we have the biggest gap is in the very low-income or the low-income housing affordability. And right now, with construction costs and a shortage even of supplies for construction, it's just not something that's going to pencil out for private developers to look at. They can build houses near golf courses and still make a profit. So I targeted talking to three different nonprofit developers, and they're used to working with small counties to larger counties to put in low-income housing. Typically, the way this works is they then own the housing, and they, and then the counties, Health and Human Services, would send and do referrals to them, and they would be the property managers, and that's how they recover the expense that they put in. The advantage to, for us to partner with them is we can access some funding to help them to get the startup, to get it going. And that also gives us, in the agreement, the right to ask that they look at our clients for housing first. Two out of three of them, well, one was not interested, one we had three or four meetings with, and they weren't interested, but the amount of funding we had access to at that time wasn't enough for them to get started. They were looking at properties in the Arnold area that they thought they could do. And then Stanislaw Housing has recently expressed interest. Again, they're, they are a housing authority. Their only obligation to Calaveras County is to administer the voucher program for us, but they also do development within their nonprofit, and they were, they expressed interest in looking at potential properties here to see if we could, moving forward, look at, I think, a blended housing complex. So it would be a combination of workforce, senior options, and low-income. And just, this is not something that's, that's done. It's a conversation starting. So just so that, just as an example, San Luis Obispo has some stuff like this. So where they have a lot of students and they need affordable housing, when a developer comes in and maybe builds townhouses, a certain percentage of those townhouses are restricted for sliding scale. So that's just an example of ways that we could work with a nonprofit developer. That's as far as we've gotten so far.
Do you have a question?
Well, going through this, I'm glad you brought up a lot of the issues that we talked about throughout those meetings, you know? And I'm very glad you brought up the penciling out fact. I mean, it's the reality of our world, you know? The state wants to meet these numbers, but really, it's not viable for any developer at this point, from my perspective. And it's a hardship even for the nonprofits, you know? If they don't qualify for certain types of help from the state, the state. Going back to your page 36 on your thing, towards strategic plan to end homelessness, because we didn't have a chance to ask questions in between that and the housing element. Bullet points two and three, the second and third dot. Expanded the number of housing programs from two to 12 in-house programs. Is that like 12 families each?
No, those, yeah, that's a great question. So they're actual programs. A lot of them are in California Department of Social Services or HCD, so they're California programs. I think one is a HUD program. These are programs that target specific demographic groups. For example, the H-DAP program, the Housing Disability Advocacy Program, allows us to take people who've recently become disabled. Typically, it takes about two years to get Social Security to deem you permanently disabled. And if you go to work, you'll become home, they won't give it to you. And if you don't go to work, you're homeless. This program allows us to house the folks, and we have an in-house certified specialist that can help them to advance their application through the Social Security Administration faster, so they don't have all the hiccups, just, it's a lot of paper.
Thank you for that explanation. To move on, that, how many of those, how many people do those 12 in-house programs serve?
Right now, currently, I don't have the exact number, but I know we are serving, I think, 86, 87 persons, not households, and it changes daily.
Okay, so that's eighty, no, no, this makes more sense on the numbers, because if I, if I just do like 12 households, that's $308,000 annually per household. I was like, why don't we buy one house a year and put it into the system? So, you know, that 86 people, I mean, I could pencil that out now and start.
It's 12 different programs that target different demographic groups, and as they advance through the program, they graduate out, and our services are on what's called progressive engagement. So that means we start with just a little lesson they need, and we reduce it over time so that they, they become stronger and become self-sufficient.
Thank you, Lee. Those were good answers.
Gay?
Yeah, I just have some comments, and I'm looking at the chart here, the housing production data and where we're at. And 18.8%, we're way off here in, in all of the things that were said going forward. One of the major problems that we have here in this county, trying to build any house is all, is we don't have control of any infrastructure.
We don't have, sorry?
Control over infrastructure, or infrastructure. I think what needs to be put in this and pursued is partnering with the water and sanitation districts in order to provide adequate places to build these homes going forward. That's one of the major obstacles that we have for not only contractors wanting to build single-frame houses, but even developers, is finding the infrastructure in place to do it. And no matter what type of income houses we're looking to build, that's a major obstacle. And we should move forward, trying to partner with them, find something that we can all agree with to meet these demands, because in the next five years, we're talking 890 homes, where we've only done 206 over the course of the last three years. And so I'm agreeing with Ben about the cost of the homes, the cost of material that you brought up is driving the cost of everything up. Regardless if you can buy a lot for a good amount of money, it's going to cost you a substantial amount to build the home, no matter what size it is or what type of income you're looking for. So those are a couple of things that we really are faced as an over, to overcome going forward, but I think just reaching out and continually reaching out to the infrastructure people, water and sanitation, to build some partnership is something that really needs to be part, part of this, so.
I very appreciate it very much, you and Supervisor Stopper, making me really aware of the need for them to be at the table from the start, and they are part of our Housing Resource Partnership. And when we did the research on where the funding was at, we extended it beyond housing into grants that will be available to help build infrastructure. Housing, just like you're describing, is so complex, and it's looking at, if we build lower-income housing, can we get a voucher that will help them pencil out? And can we get the water district's money? And how do we, how does that partnership work? So I'm really glad this year we got to launch that partnership, and hopefully in the next two or three years, we're going to see some fruition from it, right along the lines you're
Jack?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to personally thank you, Lee, for taking the time a couple of weeks ago to, in the evening, spend a couple of hours on Zoom, walk me through these multiple programs, and thank you both very much for the program, for the, for the presentation today, also Cory and Gabriel. I have three questions, and I'll start off by acknowledging what Suozia Taffanelli and Stopper said about the cost of housing. It is ridiculous that, you know, we are getting pressure from the state to create more housing at the same time that they're creating more requirements to make housing more expensive, from SOR to INGRES and EGRS, to all the pieces that go into it. The contradiction between what they're telling us to do and what they're doing to us is overwhelming, and our citizens are suffering. I know we all share that frustration. None of us have the authority to do much about it, though, but it is very frustrating. So my question is, as we look at this, and I appreciate you guys laying out all the programs and the problems, but if there is a policy that we as a board can take on that would break things loose, what is that policy that we should be taking on? And this is study session, so give me the ideas that you guys have come up with as you put this together on what we as a board can do to break this loose.
And in that, you're talking about development going forward?
I'm talking about what ideas do you have for us?
Okay. I, I think one of the things is already in progress. Gabriel's department is doing a comprehensive zoning and ordinance change that looks at, as part of the housing elements dictate, how to make things more accessible. Again, housing is just so complex, and you just can't eat the elephant all in one bite. You gotta do it bite, bite, bite. I think what would be most helpful to me, trying to develop these going forward, is the opportunity through my supervisors to bring these to you and get feedback and direction. You all have expertise and love this community as we do, so that we can, one layer at a time, build a really sturdy foundation that will end up in more housing and more services that actually meet the needs. Our numbers are showing we're going the right way. So we don't necessarily need to change direction, but we need to aggressively get after development and act. That would be my thoughts, and Gabriel probably has thoughts as well.
Thank you, Supervisor Garimendi. From my perspective, I think we need very, very vocal and vivid leadership from the supervisors as far as the need for low-income workforce, affordable, whatever terminology you want to place on it. And this is the reason why. It's not because we individually are advocating for any particular type of development or the other, but the fact of the matter is, we have mandates from the state. And you mentioned, you know, yeah, I mean, they give us these huge numbers. How do we meet those numbers? Well, when we have layers and layers of bureaucracy, cost of construction, I mean, it's just, it's, it's all over the place. But I think, when you think about Calaveras County, when you look at the demographics, when you look at the income level, when you look at every facet of the economic spectrum of Calaveras County, one thing we should be, we should be thriving in is workforce, low-income housing, because it more represents the demographic of the county than, you know, what you would find with, with golf course development. You know, I mean, there's a need for that as well, because we're supposed to provide housing along those lines as well. But I think we need to make a commitment, and I think we need to get over this, it can't happen in my backyard. We don't want those kinds of housing units here. It is a necessity. It, we're not trying to, you know, import people from other states or from other regions to come and live in Calaveras County because we have a plethora of affordable housing units. We are trying to provide housing units for current county residents. And I think if every, each and every one of you gets really vocal about it and make it, you know, make it one of your priorities amongst a million other things that I know you have to prioritize, then I think it begins to kind of trickle down, so that when we bring projects before you that have workforce housing, workforce housing label on it, it is not received in a very negative way, which has been, at least from, from the grapevine, the reaction whenever we try to come forward with these kinds of housing projects.
Thank you. I know sharing a microphone can be fun.
Don't go far. I got more questions.
I think it's an excellent question, and I really appreciate that you posed a policy question. Interestingly, in Calaveras County, we've had sort of, we've been offered guidance around what we prioritize. And what we've done in the services side of housing that you've seen is get away from a receptacle or a holding area for the short term for individuals. And we've known and we've seen in other counties, by doing that, you actually can create a backlog. If you don't have the housing to put individuals in after they've benefited from an emergency intervention, then it makes no sense to offer the emergency at all. And so we've, we've acted on the services side under an unstated policy that we are looking at long-term housing opportunities, long-term stability, and building capacity, starting with our workforce housing and moving up in, you know, to approach anyone's level of income in housing opportunities. The area that I think some policy will need to be addressed is in that extreme poverty or in the very low-income category. And I think that your planning director has addressed that in his response, but I do believe that that's going to be, it's going to take courage as a community to establish what that looks like for our community.
Thank you. And I would encourage you, the three of you, to think about, always think about, where's the silver bullet, right? I mean, there may not be one. This may just be something we stack on over time, but if there's a policy that we are responsible for that we could change, that would be great. My second question is, you mentioned up there several times, impact to short-term housing, and as I reviewed your presentation yesterday, it came up time and again. Should we, as a policy for this board, take that on, and what impacts will that have? And is that, do we have a role to play in that? That is a third rail, I get it. I don't like to restrict people's private property rights, but I'd like to know what your opinion is on it, the three of you. As a policy.
Supervisor Garimendi, this is a very loaded question.
It is.
Because it's a very loaded question. Because it's a very loaded question. Because I can tell you that we need to at least assess the impact of short-term housing on our inability to develop housing in the county and also the inability to provide affordable housing in the county. There are benefits to short-term housing, but I think we need to take a timeout and actually study it. And that's what we haven't done. I mean, I can tell you how many short-term rentals we have in each one of your districts, but we need to look at how has that impacted our inability to get housing provided for people who actually need them? You know, if you're, you know, short-term house, short-term rentals makes good income for the homeowner. And that has a benefit to it, you know, from a particular standpoint. But when we're looking at the collective benefit to the county in general, I think we need to have a balance. Now, I'm not going to go to the very extreme and say, start doing something really tragic. What I'm saying is let us study and understand where we are and how big or small this particular facet of housing in the county, how, what impact it has on the ability or inability to provide housing for other, other economic groups in the county. I don't know if Lee wants to, anything to add to that?
Just a little bit. Our housing element, one of the implementations is to do a study on it. There are other communities that have a good base, economic base in tourism that are also facing this. A lot of things we're facing aren't just Calaveras County. And so if we get a study and we have data to drive from, we can design a program and look at what is working to try to look at. So instead of just jumping to maybe making legislation about it, we can look and see what are some of our options that come back with them after we do a study. So that would be the place to start.
I would appreciate that. I have one last question, and I'll turn it back over. We have, in your presentation, you mentioned our three partners. I'd like to find out what's, what the value of those housing authorities are, particular Stanislaw's. I know that they've sat on several projects. So I'd like to understand what value that is to our county. And as a policy question, again, is this the right partnership or should we think of a different way to do it? Because it's not, I'm not seeing anything happening. And so, you know, since we had this NAFW several years ago, I haven't seen anything happening, and we can't afford to have anybody take their toys and go home. We have to work the problem. So I'd like to have your opinion on whether we as a board ought to take this on as a policy question.
Also, a great question. What I would like to do is have Lee address the Stanislaw Housing Authority and what their, their role is here in Calaveras. I know that she's spent some time really looking into the particulars of that. And as a small rural county, I do know that the focus for housing authority is in establishing a voucher system. And she has been instrumental in increasing the access of, to the voucher systems by increasing the numbers quite a bit. Some would say absurdly so, but I want you to talk about that because I know that that's sort of the focus that the Stanislaw Housing Authority has had and less so, I believe, on some, some building, but you go ahead.
So Stanislaw Housing Authority was established in 1949 for Stanislaw County. And the main purpose of housing authorities was to administer housing vouchers from HUD. Calaveras didn't have a representative and HUD approached a lot of the counties that already had housing authorities to, to see if they would take on other smaller counties so we could get vouchers here. And, and so Stanislaw is now responsible for vouchers for an eight-county region, and Calaveras is part of that. When I came on board for housing, we had 67 vouchers for the entire county. These were targeted for disabled and elderly people. I'm sure you can imagine the need is much greater than 67. There, vouchers come in different forms, just like the programs. They're kind of target different demographic groups. We've been, we've worked over the last three years to, to really firm up our relationship with Stanislaw Housing. And as a result, we've been given 30 additional vouchers as compared to the other three counties in our continuum of care who have received three each. We paired it with our programs, with our locator services. And so one of the difficulties with the voucher program is you can get a voucher that will help you to pay for your housing, but if there's nowhere to spend it, it expires. And so, and you can only extend that for a little while. So we've been pretty successful in getting our elderly and our disabled paired with these and then finding housing where they can spend them and bringing up through our case management, shoring up the things that stabilize those households. So the relationship, and that's their only obligation to us, is to administer our vouchers. Stanislaw Housing Authority, in addition to that, access a nonprofit developer and they can choose to develop affordable housing, most of theirs. And if you look at their budget, most of that housing that they have developed is in Modesto or in the surrounding areas there because that's where they're based. But they are willing to talk to us and to work with us as a nonprofit developer to develop similar type housing here. And again, going forward for us, I want to make sure you know, when you look at the RENA, the biggest need we have is workforce housing. If you look at the economic group, the largest number of houses needed are there. The hardest to get built, though, are those for low income. So doing blended housing moving forward, if we partner with a nonprofit developer, whether it's Stanislaw or Mercy or one of these other nonprofits, if we can get them in, we can apply as a county for funding that they can't apply for, that we can partner with them too. They can supply vouchers to a few of those townhouses or apartments that ensures that they get the funding back to pay off the loans that they take out to be able to put the projects forward. So it's kind of a partnership and you have to figure out what's available to them, what's available to us. If we pool our resources, can we move a project forward that will hit our targets?
Thank you.
Can I answer your question?
Kind of, but I just want to make clear, this is an organization that's been sitting on real estate, developable real estate in our county for five, seven years, and they haven't developed it. So I would like to see some action from them. And we, if they're not, I don't like the idea of us having to go down and beg them to help us as our agency, which is what it seems like we're having to do. I want us to take control. We're the ones who are held accountable to the state for RENA. We're the ones who have the workforce that is working, that does not have a place to live. And so they either need to, let's see if I can put this, need to either, I want to describe, get on with it or get out of here. Is that better put? And so hopefully we could have that kind of motion there, and I appreciate your comments. That concludes my question, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Stopper, you're late, John.
Well, good questions, Mr. Garimendi. I think the zoning ordinance is going to be crucial because we can possibly provide through that and also applying our environmental impact report for different types of uses to that, we can provide new paths for legitimate uses in different areas, possibly, especially when it comes to addressing this. You know, opening up certain types of housing uses and different types of zoning, for example. You know, it's not, it's not a cookie cutter. It's not, it doesn't all fit the same. I understand that. You know, one thing that's brought up here, I really see the long shot is hitting that lowest number. It just doesn't pencil out even for the nonprofits. But there is something for that lower number, and the state provides is a SEQA exemption, right? And that, that's a substantial load off of costs when it comes to a developer. Now, I don't think it's enough to be able to make it affordable even for the low end at this time. But maybe working with, through the state and their legislator, talking to them, hey, you know, these are what will work for Calaveras County, opening that up to more of a workforce level when it comes to those SEQA exemptions, possibly, may make it pencil out in certain situations for certain developers in certain areas. Something that was brought up that we, we can get money when it comes to us partnering with a nonprofit, that the nonprofit can't, can't acquire. At the same time, we're looking at that, something we haven't done in the past, and Mr. Toffenelli definitely brought up partnership with our different utilities, is bring them in at the front load of that conversation because we don't do that. And at that point, they're saying, here's what our needs are. And if the county or that district can, like, qualify for that in one way or the other, we need to know that from the initial start of the proposal, the project. So that way, we aren't going through the process and we're like, hey, we're already good in the water district or, or, you know, special districts, like, what the heck? Why didn't you let us know earlier? We could have qualified for said money when it comes to infrastructure, which is, you know, can be a outrageous amount, as much as $100 to $400 a foot when it comes to underground, which is our biggest hurdle here. Right. And then the capacity when it gets to it. I mean, I've been through, on the other end, I've been through master plans recently. We're going through another section for down, down in Mr. Toffenelli's district. And, you know, coming up with viable ideas, but that's the collaboration, two entities working together so that we can provide the best services and abilities to the community. And that comes in money that does come from the state that we qualify for and then letting them know in a timely manner. I brought it up before on another solution that I personally would like to see, you know, I'm talking about state SEQA exemptions. Let's talk about our fees and stuff in certain situations and, you know, are we, as a board, willing to look at certain situations where developers like, hey, I can make this pencil out and I can do it for the community if you're able to write off this on certain fees and permit fees and so on? You know, are we willing to take that bite to meet these numbers?
Supervisor Stopper, I think those are some very, very insightful comments. And I think what I'm taking out of this is that we need to look at our zoning ordinance more closely. And outside of, of the SEQA and the, and the infrastructure issues, we need to start looking at alternative types of construction. Right now, we're talking about, you know, you know, brick and mortar and wood and so on and, but they're so, in chronically, in communities that have chronic housing shortages, they have implemented a variety of housing types that are not very, very expensive to come up with. But it's just that when it becomes a question, well, our code doesn't really allow us to allow for blah, 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 then we start running into brick walls. So if we allow every possible type of, for lack of a better word, shelter that provides housing, I'm not talking about Quonset Hots and things of that nature, but alternative types of, of construction that provide housing for specific members of our community, I think this is some of the things that we should consider. Now, we would have to do that on a case-by-case basis. On the, on the issue of SEQA and kind of moving that exemption over to, over to workforce housing, I think we can perhaps start the conversation and through, you know, through our representatives, kind of push that through the legislature. But I think that direction has to come from the top down to us rather than for us because we might be the only, one of the few counties that are actually pushing that idea. Now, if it comes, if we have enough counties that are actually pushing that idea and we have a different, our representatives, you know, at Sacramento to kind of push that idea for, for small rural counties, can we up the SEQA exemption to the level of workforce housing? I mean, that would provide some incentive. Another incentive that I haven't seen used very often in this county is, is providing some kind of a discount, the word I'm looking for, density bonus. That is the word. Density bonus. We have it in our code, but we hardly ever use it. And density bonus comes in when a developer comes and says, I want to build, you know, housing in your community. And we say, okay, if it's low-income housing or housing for the elderly or student housing in the case of the one in San Luis Obispo, if you dedicate a certain percentage of that housing unit to a particular group that is disenfranchised, for example, then we get to, you get a 20% number, additional number of units to your development if you can afford to build that development. So then we will have a DID restriction that says, you know, you dedicate 20% of your housing units to students or the elderly, and in exchange for that, you get to build at a density that is 20% higher than what you would normally build. That's already state law. So there are ways, we just need to have that willing partner to come in and say, I'm ready, I'm willing, let's go.
Very good one. I like hearing about that one. When it comes to different types of buildings, I think we need to tread carefully. We have certain areas with certain community plans that are, you know, on the face, they want a certain look, you know? Those, those types of communities don't fit in certain areas as much as others, you know? And so, you know, I think, I think that all in all, we just have to be careful of the not my backyard yarders as we proceed, you know? And a lot of those are for good reason, you know? I mean, I, I, sorry, Mr. Toffenelli, but I'll use Lock and Tenna as a, as an example. You know, those people spent good money on nice houses on a golf course and, you know, they, they don't want to have to look across the street at a bunch of, let's see, pre-manufactured homes, for example, you know? That doesn't really fit that face of that part of the community from my perspective. Sorry, I'm not speaking for Mr. Toffenelli. I'm speaking on my own.
Ms. Calaway?
There have been several, at least in my district, because I probably have the bulk of the short-term rentals, subdivisions that have restricted short-term rentals. So it'd be interesting to see how many of those short-term rentals that no longer exist have been turned into long-term rentals. I mean, I can't answer that, but that might be a start because you're right, the short-term rental story is going to severely have a outpouring of comment from District Three and on both sides, both sides of it. Also, I sort of go back in time. I totally agree with you, Gabriel, that the board has to have the courage when the room is packed with people saying, don't do it, for us to say, we're going to do it. And one comes, one that comes to mind years ago, I'm not sure if Gary was on the board or not, we had a complex here in San Andreas, and they wanted to make, I think, three of the units for mentally ill. And you would have thought that we had set off a bomb in the middle of town, and we didn't approve it. And these were already relatively low to moderate income housing units. But getting back to what Jack said, we have to make difficult decisions, and that is one of them. We, we had the one where we were going to build tiny houses on campus and we didn't do, and we didn't, thank you, and we didn't do it. There's a potential of a project in my subdivision, which I think would work toward having, and it's in your report, the possibility of having some of the units designated, whatever label, low-income, moderate-income, workforce, whatever. But there's that potential, and we have to have the courage as a board to say, we're committed to this and do it. And truly, to... And truly, today, as much fault as the rest of us, we have not had the courage to say to the "not my backyard" people, it is going to be in your backyard. So, that's fine, you can do it in Forest Meadows, I don't care, there's a project, a potential project, it's in the report. And I have to have that courage, not only as a resident, but, well, I won't be on the board, but to be able to support that if it comes forward. And either we're committed as a board, and we're going to face a room full of angry people, which we have in the past, which had nothing to do with this, Trinitas comes to mind, and some, a project in copper, which had nothing to do with low-income, middle-income, high-income, does that do with the project? And we either just say, as Jack said, are we committed or aren't we committed? So. I do have one question, Corey. The, during COVID, we had the hotels or motels that were used, what is the status of that now and is that?
Project Room Key timed out. So the protections for rental arrears and short-term housing in motels, for instance, that timed out. Any individuals that we serve in our housing services programs are through other grants that have other priorities and focuses that I know Lee can address briefly.
So we came towards long-term solutions. And the scattered site shelter kind of leaned into this, when it wasn't going to work, and we were looking at, there was a lot of money being offered by the state to build emergency housing, but no long-term solutions were offered. It really helped to redirect us to what does a long-term solution look like for those folks? We still use the motels for short-term while they're preparing to go into permanent housing. We don't want to burn our landlords, we want to make sure their tenants are good tenants, and so we have to have that space for a little bit of time. I forget what the numbers, I just gave it to you, Corey, but by November 1st, we'll be down to four local. They advance, it changes every day, by someone coming in, another family advancing out. And so, on October 18th, there were 11 rooms out of 41 occupied here in San Andreas that were our clients, the rest are not our clients, that are in program, working weekly with case managers. And all of them, we are just in process of getting, when they get to the first of the month, not all of them, but we'll be down to only four left, that are currently there, will have graduated into permanent housing that they're paying for.
So, there's one other thing I have. It's sort of been an embarrassment to me, if I've been asked just to help find some housing, and this is probably for you, but Tuolumne and Amador both have shelters, and we don't have a shelter. And that's pretty embarrassing, when I have to call adjoining counties and ask them if they have room. Is there any possibility?
We are part of a continuum of care. So any emergency housing in four counties, including Mariposa, Amador, Tuolumne, Calveras, we all work together. And, and so, and that database allows me to see a history of a person, up to 10 years, of where have they received housing services? Are they just circling between counties? So we can stop that. And that's been really wonderful. So we don't have an emergency shelter that offers 30 days with no end. We offer, when you come in, in an emergency, you go to long-term housing. So you're in a program that is going to address a long-term solution, and the conversation with you when it's offered, because the county's not mandated to provide it, is, are you ready to work on these, will I do an assessment on these areas of instability? So in that way, the motel rooms are short-term, until the person is ready to move in to being a tenant and being a good one.
Thank you. Jack?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My last question, and you judge a tree by its fruit, and I tell you, our numbers are going down. And when I go to Snore and Amador, they seem to be going the other direction, so congratulations on that work. My question, my final thing is, when I asked about policy, one of the things you suggested was, we talk more about this. For me personally, and I can't speak for the rest of the board, when there's an application, before there's an application, when there's an idea, a concept, I would like to hear about it. I understand my district are better than anybody sitting here, because I'm responsible for it every day. And so, we can help avoid problems that happened historically through communications. We could tell you where the landmines are, we could tell you where the utilities are, this is our every single day and minute. And so, please, don't wait for an application, because that means some developer just spent a ton of money putting this thing together. If a developer shows up and says, hey, I got an idea, I would like to hear from it personally. I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I think that's how I can be a better help to this process.
Yes.
And do you want, if it's not the developer coming to us, but it's us going to the developer, to see if a partnership is possible, do you want to know about that?
If you've got a piece of dirt, you've got your eye on, I want to know.
Okay, got it.
And I hear that Supervisor Stopper is in that same.
It goes hand in hand, I've talked to Gabriel about this in the past. We've been kind of clear as a board when it comes to compliance issues and a few other, you know, if it's in our district, or it affects, you know, two supervisors, for example, that there's, there's interest in it being put on their radar, so we aren't blindsided by anything. So it goes across multiple things, not just development.
Okay, are there any other supervisor questions? Okay, last one, I have a list. But I'm not going to go through them, because I'm looking at the time, and other staff has been patiently, and public has been patiently, but I agree with the majority of what my counterparts have said. But I'm going to go with what Jack is saying with policy. I have, in past experience, seen what successful partnerships are with ensuring that workforce housing is built. But it goes back to what Jack and Marita have said, is one policy, and the world to face the public, and ensuring that we make sure that there is the ability for staff to promote that to the developers, whether you are a nonprofit developer or for-profit developer. But there needs to be mechanisms in place, and that goes back to what Jack is saying. There needs to be policy, there needs to be a matrix, there needs to be a communication to those developers to understand what those costs are going to be, before they even get into talking to you. And we don't have that at all. We don't even have a foundation. And if we don't even have that foundation, our other partners, whether it be the realtors out there, or nonprofits, or, you know, resource connect, how do you promote those? How do you get that interest? And so, I would be wanting to see something like that come back. You know, talk to the contractors. We don't have the control of the utilities. In past experience, we did, a lot of those impact fees, we were able to make policies to reduce them up to 53%. And so, those are the kinds of things I have been hoping to hear and learn how we can better support you. So I really hope that you guys take it serious. I think there's a majority of us now saying that we want to make this less bureaucratic with the mandate that we have from the state. And so, what do we need to do so we can, to meet these elements? So, I will touch base with staff after, and ask some of these other nuanced questions for clarity in the presentation. With that, I want to make sure that the public has comments, and Al has been patiently waiting for us. So Al.
Al Segala, real estate broker, 50 years, and maybe I could pack that into three minutes. I'm also landlord, and I rented out, no, I'm not doing it now, but years ago, I had an RV, and I rented it out. And I know in Copper Cove where I live, there's five RVs or trailers on private property, below the radar, no subsidy, no regulations, that are usually relatives, maybe mother-in-law or somebody they know. And the cost is normally pretty low, like $200 a month, or $300 a month. And so, we have a thriving market, it could be as many as 100 units that are below the radar, that nobody knows about. But they, that's a free market, it's already functioning, and with a minimum cost. Jack brought up a good point, and this is the regulations stopping development. One of them is fire sprinklers. Can you imagine fire sprinklers in a residence? What would happen if you had some heat in there? Oh man, wreck your furniture, it'd be horrible. Well, they have an alternate to that called Halon. It's used in airplanes, it does not flood the airplane out, it does not hurt people, you can breathe it, but it puts a fire out. Why don't we have our building code changed to accept Halon? And there's some other gases that are similar to that, also not hurtful. And we need people with courage, that are willing to take a stand and say, we'll be first. The other issue was short-term rentals. I'm familiar with the short-term rentals. It might be better to call them vacation rentals. Vacation rentals are a good thing, good for our economy, good for the people that rent it out, and also good for the people that come here to buy things in our community. When they come here, they eat food, believe it or not, they do. And they pay taxes, and they're happy. And sometimes too happy, because the neighbors complain, they don't like the parties. That's okay, you can handle that, but you don't have to ban vacation rentals, because some are a little loud. So we have solutions that are already in the works, we have to break down government barriers to building, and if we can do that, we're going to have a happy tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment in the room? Then, okay, I'll go over to you. Is there any public comment on the room?
There are no online public comments.
Okay, great. With that, thank you for the presentation, all of you. Really appreciate it, I think this was a great dialogue. We're going to take a quick five-minute, so you guys can transfer out, and I believe we need a quick break, and then we'll be back. We are on a time limit, so please come back to the boardroom. Okay, thank you for that patient. Now we will go on to regular agenda item number 14. If the clerk could please read out.
Item 14, action item, Public Works, adopt the integrated pest management policy as a component of the pyrethroid management plan requirement by the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board and find exempt from SEQA.
Public Works, Jacob, you up? Okay. Good morning, or good afternoon at this point?
Yes, good afternoon, 12 minutes into the afternoon. My name is Jacob, and I work for the Department of Public Works. I was here today to talk about the integrated pest management policy. You have the information before you. This is an, sort of an extension, an additional component to the pyrethroids management plan that we brought before the board in 2020. This is an update to that plan, and what it asks us to do is to take a more thoughtful look at the pesticides that the county deploys throughout all county-owned properties. And it's making us eliminate certain pesticides that are deemed more toxic to humans, and kind of look at, look at where we apply pesticides, take a more targeted look, and use less pesticides, especially pesticides that contain pyrethroids. Are there any questions from the board on the policy?
Supervisor Naomi?
Thank you very much, Jacob, I appreciate it. And I read through the policy last night. I encourage the Department of Ag, as well as Public Works, to continue to try to find some alternatives to glyphosate. I recognize the need for it at this time, because of the fire dangers along the roads, we had a couple of those in Paloma alone this year. But we also know it's a carcinogenic substance, and we need to figure out a solution. So as we limit that, that'd be great, and I'd also encourage you to continue to work with Caltrans on their invasive species, especially dark thistle along Highway 49 and 26. So I just want to encourage that, and if you get a solution, please implement it as quickly as you can.
Indeed, and we're, in addition to working with Ag, we're working with all county departments, buildings and grounds. It's a county-wide policy, it's just Public Works is making the presentation.
Right, I mean, we just, we don't have a better solution at this time, but we also know that it's posing a risk to all of our health.
We're, and we're assessing that right now. We're actually assessing the use of our chemicals right now.
Are there any board questions? None? Okay, are there any public comment?
There's no online.
None online?
No.
Okay. With that, if there is any other questions or comment, I will bring it back to the board for a motion to approve.
I'll move the side, Madam Chair.
Okay, you have a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Are those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See you, men. Thank you. Next, we will move on to item number 15. If the clerk could please read out.
Item 15, resolution agricultural. One, conduct a public hearing. Two, make a public benefit finding. And three, adopt a resolution amending the master fee schedule to adopt a schedule of uniform fees as authorized by Section 12210.5 of the California Business and Professions Code for supplemental testing of commercial weighing and measuring devices upon request of the owner or user.
Hi.
Hi, Madam Chair, Honorable Members of the Board, I'm Carrie Bassett, I'm the Deputy Ag Commissioner. Our Agricultural Commissioner, Jesse Fowler, sends her regrets that she cannot present today, as she is under the weather with COVID. So, so this item.
Hold on one second, sorry, I need to open the public hearing. Hold on a sec, okay, so before you get started, public hearing, open.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So this item would authorize our department to charge set fees for retesting commercial devices that we have already tested, within the scope of our annual inspection, and found them to be out of tolerance. So this is for testing beyond our annual test. The weights and measures program, unlike our agricultural programs, is not reimbursed through grants and/or subvention funds. It is funded solely through fees, and when those fees don't cover the costs, then the general fund. I am here to see if the majority of the board would like our department to recover costs to perform this work that can alternately be completed outside our county department, and instead be done by a state-licensed, registered service agent, or an RSA. RSAs are, whoop, sorry. Don't you love it when you have a script and you lose your place? RSAs perform such work as a regular part of their business model. They are licensed and paid to do repairs and tests for accuracy, ensuring we will not need to repeatedly retest the same scale beyond verification, the device and its accuracy, once it has been repaired. However, local commercial device owners have the option to save money, repair the device themselves, and instead request our department to do unlimited retesting until the device is correct for accuracy. Per- Per Business and Profession Code 12210.5, our department must test any commercial scale if requested and when requested on the same device multiple times in a year. That device fee that we charge only recuperates the initial inspection cost, if that. Costs incurred with subsequent inspections are covered by the general fund alone. As far as cost analysis, this service is by request of the device owner or user. So the number of devices, times each device is rechecked, and time plus equipment cost will vary from year to year. As an example, last year, we had one vehicle scale owner who requested repeated testing. As a large scale, this required the resources of two of our trained staff in the field and the use of our Class 8 weight truck. So the retesting of this one-vehicle scale took approximately six hours in totality. So this cost the county approximately $900 for each retest. Where I got the, where the $900 comes from is a neighboring county at one point inquired about contracting the use of our truck plus our Class A driver. They were quoted a $150 per hour use for operation cost and employee time plus benefits. So six hours times 150 is $900 per retest. As such, the Department of Measurement Standards, DMS, sent out a notice recently of recoverable fees per BPC 12210.5. It is one of the attachments in your packets, and as you can see, sets fees according to what RSA would charge. Other counties are likewise exploring adopting these fees with their own board's approval. With that, are there any questions?
Are there any questions from the board members? Kay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple of questions. We have the proposed rates and from it.
Yes.
And it says for most of it, one of them, the first one's $145 an hour for small-capacity manufactured scale testing.
Yes.
And then plus $275 trip fee or $1.17 a mile, whichever is greater. I just have an issue with that. Why doesn't it say whichever is lower?
That is an excellent question. This was a schedule that was set out by DMS. We did not write it.
You did not write this?
This is not us.
This is the state's.
The state wrote it.
Okay, so it's nothing that we did. Okay, that answers my question. I just couldn't figure out why we put that in there.
The state wrote it, that makes sense. You're right.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Muira?
Carrie, the RSAs have to charge the same fees that were approved? Or can they charge more?
So, there was a survey sent out. Okay, so in, on the first page of that DMS notice, in the third paragraph down, the hourly fee quoted in this schedule is generally higher than the RSA average, but it does not exceed the highest rate. So they surveyed basically the RSAs throughout the state of California, and they took the average and made our rate a little bit higher than average.
So?
The DMs.
So the people who need this service now can, in essence, shop. They can go to an RSA, or they can come to the county, and if they can get it cheaper from an RSA, they can go to the RSA.
Hopefully, yes.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And the fees, as you mentioned to Supervisor Toffenelli, are set by the state?
Yes, ma'am.
Got it, thank you.
Jack?
But we can, this is, the guidelines are set by the state. We're setting the fees, right? So if we decide, for example, that really fancy truck that we got, which was a 401, but we've got it, it'd be great if it generated some income as it goes along. So we have to imagine we're in a competitive marketplace. So if we're not using it, we should consider our fees.
Indeed.
Reconsider our fees.
Reconsider.
Reconsider.
Are there any other board questions? None, this is the public hearing, so I'm going to turn it over to the public comment. Are there any public comments in the room? Okay. Any public comments online?
There are none online.
Okay. With that, if there are no other questions by the board, I will close the public hearing. And is there a motion for this item?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None.
Thank you.
She's up again. She's on the next item, too. Which is also another public hearing.
Just to adopt it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, next item is item number 16, and I will turn over to the clerk to read out.
Item 16, resolution agriculture. One, conduct a public hearing. Two, make a public benefit finding. And three, adopt a resolution amending the master fee schedule to allow the Department of Agriculture to charge a fee to recover its costs for testing non-commercial weighing and measuring devices by request.
With that, I will open the public hearing. You're up again.
Hi again. So in regards to recuperating the cost to test non-commercial scales, these are the scales that are not used for sale transactions, meaning Weight Watchers scales, 4H scales, scales at the doctor's office, a fishing tournament scale, and wrestling scales to place weight classes. These are non-commercial. So we have historically tested the non-commercial scales but cannot charge a fee to recover costs without board approval per Business and Professions Code 12210 subsection B. The board does have the option to direct our department not to test non-commercial scales as it's not required that we inspect them in code, or alternately, you can direct us to not charge for the inspection. In light of balancing our budget, I will bring the board's attention that, like item 15, any cost spent testing these scales is recoverable through fees and general fund dollars alone. As we have no accepted fee currently, all program costs are paid for with general fund dollars. Our office is proposing to recover costs by setting a fee to capture employee time benefits and mileage per the IRS annual cost per mile. Also, like item 15, the number of requests for testing varies from year to year. Last year, we had three non-commercial scale testing requests. Of our adjoining foothill counties, Tuolumne and Alpine do charge. We did reach out to Amador as well, but they have not yet responded as of this morning. So I put it to this board if you would like us to charge for this.
Supervisor Guerra Mendy?
Thank you. So we, just so I'm clear, so we had three of these happen last year.
Correct.
What were the three?
Oh, shoot. One was for football weights, one was for wrestling, and the fish tournament scale.
You know, this is not a high-ticket item that's going to make us much money. It seems like a pretty good commercials, community service. You know, we also test at the fairgrounds for 4H. We test both high schools for various programs. I would, I would propose that we not charge and just continue to do community service. I mean, come on, we're going to go charge the wrestling program?
We can.
Baseball's next, Carrie. Just very slow.
So, Muira, Jack, what about that we would do one free one a year? Because what was happening at the commercials, they kept, the ones we just did, they keep coming and saying, well, could you do it again? Could you do it again? So if we said, okay, you get one free one a year.
I mean, what if you get a cow comes and knocks over the scales and screws everything up? You know, I mean, you want to, then turn to the middle of the jump.
Do you do, do you do the fairground scales, too?
We do test those.
Under this policy, they would be, would they be under this one or the one before?
I would be to check in with the office and get back to you on that, Supervisor.
If I, if I'm... I mean, I agree with Supervisor Guerra Mendy. It's just that if you have somebody, a group, even if it's non-commercial that keeps, that we keep going back to.
Yes, just lucky.
To me, it looks like a solution seeking a problem. So...
If I'm, if I may, Carrie, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the way this item is drafted, it would authorize the department to charge this fee for, and I know this is going to sound silly, non-commercial devices from commercial businesses. She mentioned the example of Weight Watchers, if they want their scale checked. But it also asked the board to make a public benefit finding and specifically exempts, like, nonprofit organizations. So I think most of those that you mentioned would fall within that and not be charged under this. This would just be if a commercial enterprise is asking for a non-commercial scale to be checked, then there would be a fee.
I understand that, and that's a very good point, Counselor. I just, I'm looking at three instances last year, and we're going through a whole... We've probably spent more money than we'd ever recover just in putting this item together. So I'm just... You know, you have to know my position.
Supervisor, stop it.
I hear what counsel has to say about the exemption for nonprofits. And I could, so I believe your point's addressed in those situations. You know, one day a year, say, everyone comes down this day of the year to do yours, and that's your only opportunity, you know? That way it can all be put in. But, yeah, no, I'm in agreement with Mr. Guerra Mendy, and I hear what counsel has to say, is it's addressed through the exemption for nonprofits. Is that correct? Is that what you said?
Correct. The way the item is drafted, such that the department is asking the board to authorize the fee, but also to make a public benefit finding and waive imposition of the fee for any nonprofit entities.
What's the public benefit finding that we find?
I believe that is all laid out in your staff report. But, you know, I think the idea is that there's, you know, tax-exempt organizations, nonprofits are providing...
A service to the...
A service to the public themselves, so then we're sort of providing a service to them in exchange for it.
Okay. I'm sorry. Just following up Ben's question to counsel. Does that mean who makes that determination? It's just any nonprofit?
The item, the item states that any, yeah, tax, that tax-exempt organizations would be exempt.
Sorry for jumping there.
Kay?
It's okay. I'm in agreement with Jack. I'm reading, you read what's written here, and it would have, last year would have projected an annual increase to the department's revenue of approximately $100. I mean, we're talking $100 here. Even if it goes to six, we're talking $200 to their department finances. I'm in agreement. I didn't count the three, so...
Muira?
No, I'm agreeing.
I have one que...
Go ahead.
I have one question in here. So it has to do with the mileage and time. Am I reading this correct? That it is $58.50 per mile?
$58.50.
It says $58, $58.50 per mile.
Misplaced the...
Yeah, I think it should be a point by...
I... cents.
Oh, yeah.
It's $58 a mile.
I don't think that's accurate. That could be a typo.
Okay, because it was like, holy, how is $100 going to cover? Okay, so can we just make sure our decimal points are in the right place on some of this stuff on the final? We don't need to go into the nuances. But I just, with them talking about the $100, and I'm reading that, they're not, we're not penciling out.
Yeah, there's double typo there. It says $58.5 and it says cents, not dollars, per mile. So I don't know what half a cent looks like, but...
I don't know.
Okay, that was the only question I have. Are there any other board questions before I go to public comment? Okay, are there any in boardroom public comment? This is the public hearing? Nope. Okay, are there any Zoom comment?
There is no online comments.
Okay. Then I'll bring it back to the board. I will close the public hearing if there's nothing else to add. Okay. We'll close the public hearing, and at this time, is there a motion for this item?
I guess I move that we make a public benefit finding that we do not want to charge for this non-commercial weight permits.
Did I write that?
So I think I'm hearing that you, so in essence, you are making a motion not to pass the resolution that is before the board, but...
Based on...
But making a public benefit finding in not making a motion.
Yes, that's what I said, I thought. Whatever you want to correct me on is fine. I just felt...
We don't have to have a motion.
I felt for the record, we needed to say...
Yes, I agree that if the county is expending resources and choosing not to charge for that, then it might be appropriate to make a public benefit finding. So then I think the motion is to make a public benefit finding and to not charge for any of these non-commercial.
So we've got a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? See you, none? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have item number 17. At this time, I will be turning the mic over to Vice Chair Toffenelli, and I will be recruiting myself from this item.
Vice Chair Toffenelli, can I request that we take a five-minute break, please? We need to get...
Yes, we can take a five-minute break. We'll be back at 12:40.
Thank you.
We are back, and we are on to item number 17. Now I'll ask the clerk to please read the item for us.
Item 17, action item, OES. Authorize the Calaveras County Director of Emergency Services or a designee to, one, submit a full grant proposal of, two, the Sierra Nevada Conservancy Wildfire Recovery and Forest Resilience Grant Program for the McKay's Field Break Project; two, accept and execute the grant award if awarded; three, execute a supplemental project agreement under the Master Good Neighbor Agreement with the USFS Santa Saus National Forest for the McKay's Field Break Project; and four, execute necessary projects documents as needed to complete the grant proposal... as needed to complete the grant proposal project. Additionally, the board has been submitted a resolution that was mistaken, not executed with this item, and it just memorializes this item to be finalized at the end if it's accepted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Osborne.
Good afternoon, board members. Thank you, I'm John Osborne, your Emergency Services Director of Emergency Services. In the essence of time, I will try and move through this as quickly as I can, realizing that I am the sole thing that's standing between all of us at lunch. Okay, everybody can see the McKay's Field Break that I have up?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this is, this is the restoration of a field break known as McKay's. It was originally constructed, I believe, started in the nineties, and it is what was responsible for stopping the Darby Fire of two thousand and one, and certainly played a role in the electric fire from just two years ago. And unfortunately, this, this field break has been in disrepair for some time, as you can see by the photographs. Our friends at the Calaveras Amador Forestry Team, or CALAM, found a funny opportunity to revive this field break with the Sierra Nevada Conservancy. They submitted a proposal to the proposal, and we met with the SNC in the field on this field break, and we have been invited to submit a full application. In short, this field break is about just under eleven hundred acres of poultry. You can see the field break here, and kind of creeps down below big trees here and down towards halfway pines. It protects the Love Creek area, as you can see here, and augments the SPI Love Creek-shaped field break that you see here. One of the most important features is it also acts as a buffer for the Big Trees State Park, which is near and dear to all of our hearts, and for fires that come up this range in that direction. So we'll move right along. Here's kind of a closer-in picture. This is the Calaveras-Twalm County line and the Stan River, and the largest unit, Unit Fifty-One, is right here, and then there's several other units that kind of make its way down Love Creek between Love Creek and the Stan Swast River. That's just a recap of basically the forest itself, and then some of the different things that we'll be doing. We'll be doing commercial thinning and sanitation, massification and commercial thinning in, in different units. That's just some information about the free field break itself. It ranges from thirty-seven hundred feet in elevation to just about forty-five hundred. Obviously, the slopes is what makes this area so difficult, it goes from flat to fifty-five percent sloping, so it's really difficult to get fire equipment in and out of there. Existing conditions, it's overcrowded, and it's very typical of what we find across all of our forests at this time. The undershore is too dense, and we're just stacked with fuel. Just some more pictures. This, on the left-hand side that you see here, was a prescription burn that was, that was done, and then this is actually part of the field break itself, and you can kind of get an idea of the ladder. There's no break between the ground level and the trees. And then you can also see right here some of the bug infestation trees that have, that have died that will be removed. Along with that, there's been trees that have hazard fell during storms, and that just represents heavy fuel on the floor of the forest that helped supervisors become the, become supervisors. These were some piles that were created when they were working on, on the original field break, and unfortunately, they were unable to burn them, so we're going to come back and make sure we remove all of that fuel so that we have a cleaner break. Just some of the tree mortality that you see from the drought and the bug kill, and some of the standing dead that you see here on the left, and if we remove that, you can see a nice, healthy, open forest in this left-hand picture. That's all I have for the, let's see, I've killed mine. There it is. So that's the end of the presentation. You'll notice that there is no match for this particular project. We do have some in-kind matching that, that we have been doing and will continue to do with this project, and currently, the total project is creeping up on three-point-one million total, including that in-kind support from the Forest Service from the county and several other partners, including the CALAM team. The grant itself will be about two-point-nine million dollars, and as our foresters and Forest Service continues to work through that, that number may fluctuate just, just a little bit based on some costs and as we flesh out more of the project. This is going to be, we're going to partner with the Forest Service with our Good Neighbor Agreement with, with this particular project, and so we'll author the supplemental project authorization or agreement as we discussed not too long ago when we, when you guys allowed us to enter into that agreement. So really what this is, is an opportunity for us to use the agreement as we had planned to, and it will act as a conduit for this particular grant. I hate to mention it, but if for some reason we are not granted as, through the, through this current grant process we're working through, obviously, we wouldn't be able to complete the project, and we would just hold that project as basically shovel-ready and continue to seek grant, grant opportunities that would allow us to do the project. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Supervisor Stoppa, you have a question?
Kind of answer in the end when it comes to this financing, you know, the in-kind contributions, it looks like there's a difference here of fifty-five thousand dollars, which is pennies to pay for this type of fuel reduction, and I'm more than willing to go there. Where's that coming from? The general fund?
That's, that's basically our, our time, the time that we've spent with the project, so it's really soft costs. There's also the time that the Forest Service, their soft cost in doing the NIPA and meeting with us and planning this out, and then really the, the great purpose behind using the Good Neighbor Agreement is allow us folks like the CALAM team, their, their donating their time. I think they valued it at about fifteen thousand dollars, which considering the market for, for the kind of work they're doing, that is an extremely conservative estimate of their worth.
To follow, just to follow up real quick here on the end of financing, it says, after the three million, ten thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars, it says, this amount will increase as the, we work on the project. Are we tying our hands by putting a number down on what we're requesting here?
That's why, sir, I, I ask that we be able to execute the necessary project, or execute, execute the necessary documents as needed, so if we fluctuate there, we have some other room.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Ms. Osborne. That's enough for me.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Marita.
I, of course, totally support this. Big Trees State Park is doing prescribed burns as we speak. Sierra Pacific Industries, as you know, I'm not on their Christmas list, but they have done a really good job clearing their areas. They've been very good partners, and I think this is a wonderful partnership, so with the CALAM team and the Forest Service and seeing our Good Neighbor Policy go and having been evacuated during Darby and all, I'm really supportive of this. But I do have a sidebar question, not on this project, but another one, so if there's no other que, I'll ask it after we take a vote.
All right. Jack, you have any question?
Yes, sir.
I, I do have one question, John, and that has to do with what happens if it costs more than the actual amount of money we're getting for the grant? What if we only end up doing three-quarters of it? Is that something that we can finish the three-quarters of and then ask for another grant to finish off? Or how do we go forward if there's not enough money here after we get the grant in place and we start spending the money and getting crews out there and doing the work? Where do we go from there?
Because of the, the very different and varied methods that we're using to, to revive the field break, we can do less of one or more of another to keep us kind of within our own budget. And of course, we're stationary, yes, exactly what you said. If we were only able to get three-quarters of it done, A, we'll take that, and B, we'll keep searching for avenues upon that last quarter.
Okay. Thank you. All right, seeing, Marita, your light's back on, still on. Okay, seen no other board questions or comments, all open to the public. Is there any online public comments?
Yes, Pat McGreevy.
We have Pat McGreevy.
Can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Pat.
Okay, I'd like to point out that I think the budget you're looking at is a week or two old. This grant is due on Friday, and we're, we're just completing it right now. So, but the important thing, the, two points I'd like to make, is because of the stewardship agreement that you guys signed with the Forest Service, the Forest Service is allocating two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars as a direct match to this, to this McKay's project. You know, without that agreement, we wouldn't be getting the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and our project would be less attractive to the granting agency, the Sierra Nevada Conservancy. So you guys deserve a big pat on the back for that one. And about, are we only going to, can we complete the project? Well, I think at this point, the CALAM team's probably captured over twenty million dollars on a bunch of projects, and we've completed every one of them, because we have Janet Bray and, and a couple others who are registered professional foresters, and we know what the market rates are from contractors, we work with a lot of contractors. So I think there's very little chance that we're not going to complete all of this project. I would like to state another, make another point, which is really important. This project is part of what we call the Highway, the Highway Four Wildfire Protection, Wildfire Defense System, and this system is about, we have about four thousand acres underneath the Sequoia already, and, and we've completed or are working on about half of that, two thousand acres. So that's, that's on the Highway Four side. On the Highway Twenty-Six side, we're doing the same thing. So if you put it all together, I, I would guess that at build-out, we'll have about ten, thirteen thousand acres that has been treated. The big question now is how are we going to maintain these fifteen thousand acres in the out-years? We know from the, we had the, the heat fire in 2015, and within six years, the brush grew back enough that we had, had the micro fire in July of this year. So that means that every acre that we've treated is going to need to be re-treated in six years.
Pat, I, yeah, I hate to cut you off, but this is under public comment, and you've gone over a little bit, but I appreciate your input and what you're saying, and the information you're giving is very good. It sounds like we will get this, for the amount of money we're looking for, it does look like we'll get this project completed. So thank you. Any other public comment online?
There are no further public comments.
And I see none in the room, so I will bring it back to the board.
I'd like to move all four components of this grant application to the Sierra Nevada Conservancy.
I have a motion by Supervisor Callaway.
I will second that motion.
I'm going to second by Supervisor Guaramendi. Call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes four-zero-one. Marita, you have another comment?
Yeah, John, the Utica.
Turn your microphone.
The Utica Power, Water and Power Authority also have a grant. It's a planning grant. Why are we not also supporting that? It's not the same funds from the Sierra Nevada Conservancy. I would think we would want to support anything and everything having to do with these issues.
Madam, was that directed for me to answer?
Okay. I meant, I don't know if the Sierra Nevada, Sierra Nevada Conservancy wanted a letter or a resolution from the board on this one, and I can understand that because of the, the dollar amount involved. Utica's was a planning grant, and even less, would we not, even from your office, also want a letter of support to Utica?
Yeah, so first and foremost, Utica Power has our office, the unviable support of our office. We support them routinely, we routinely write them letters of support for the various grants that they are involved with. The issue with this particular grant is, I understand their grant is from the Sierra Nevada Conservancy. I spoke with Joel earlier this week, and he and I are going to circle back and to see where we stand with that, and so please don't think that we don't want to support Utica, they're great partners, and we support them often and to the best of our abilities, and that would include that letter if we don't, if, if we don't have a conflict because of this grant.
Okay, I guess even if there was a conflict, wouldn't we, you know, I mean, that was a low-ticket item, that's all. We can talk about this offline, but, I mean, I wrote a letter of support for both of them and did not feel in a conflict per the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, so I can understand them wanting a letter from the board on this. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all my time, Mr. Chair. Thanks.
Okay, with that, we'll move on. Thank you, John, for the presentation.
Thanks, sir.
We'll move on. And we will get the chair back in here for Supervisor.
Did they invite you?
I think we're hot.
Sixty bucks. Thirty bucks. Right out to the rest of Calaveras. And I'll, I'll give you your.
Yep, okay. Next, we have Supervisor Announcements. I will start to my left with Supervisor Cowan.
Nothing to report, Madam Chair.
Jack?
Last Wednesday and Thursday, I attended a Golden State Natural Resources, Golden State Finance Authority joint meeting in Fairfield. Nothing else from required report.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I attended a CALAFCO convention last week, from Wednesday to Friday, and it was a very interesting time that I had there. And on my drive back, though, I was notified that by Melissa Ragio and our Chair, Amanda, that we received notification of a nine point eight million dollar grant for San Andreas and Pope Street Safe Route to Schools project. So we've been awarded the nine point eight million, and I'm very proud with not only COG staff, but public work staff in getting that grant approved, and I look forward to working with those two agencies and the public along that road, which I walked with them a couple Saturdays ago, all through that. So, we're very excited, and they're very excited to see this project get done and funded. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Certainly not straight county business, but I would like to remember, remind my colleagues that CJ Singin sent out an invite for the November third, or for next Thursday, November third, Dewali Dinner at the San Andreas Town Hall at five thirty. So, all of you that may be able to attend, please show your face.
Thank you, and I have nothing to report. With that, we will go into closed session and report out at the next board meeting. Thank you, everyone.